That wasn't one, okay. Nah, it's good, it's good, it's good.
I couldn't find my duck mask, so.
I can get Beaver one for you, huh? No.
You wanna mark her and you can just draw a big little one.
Look like his mouth.
So we don't think I've been through something terrible through many, too, though. Next to me, no?
We have to talk about them.
Have something to talk about? Good thought. I'm excited that I got a job this year.
You harassed him?
Yeah. Okay, we'll go ahead and call this cancel work session order. Today is Wednesday, August eighteenth, time is one oh one P M. Although these are comments at this, well, actually, I'm gonna ask Councilor Tepes to read our Councilor Moncha.
Okay. Number one. I am on the city council as an advocate, audio and effective city services. I will do what I can to promote cooperative, professional services to the city residents and to visitors. I will do what I can to promote safe environment for business and families. Two. It is my responsibility to contribute to the stability, stabilize environment for the city. I am an opponent of uproar, dissension, and conflict on the need of cooperation. I believe in routine. Greatest gift I can give to the city residents is to provide services that are predictable. Four. For every comment I make and every vote I cast, I will be motivated by the question, what is good in the city residents and visitors? Five. What I want for my family is what I want for all patrons of the city. Six. I will champion the city. I will compliment and reinforce often. I will suggest and recommend when necessary. Seven. I will support my very legal position of the council. I may not agree, but once the vote is taken, I'm with the others. Eight. I will never come to a council meeting having not having made a promise to an individual or a group. Nine. Of all times, I will remember, I am a city official whose purpose is to serve and represent others and act on their behalf. Ten. Courtesy is a rule. I will not break that rule. Eleven. Council meeting is a business meeting. It is not entertainment. It is not a social hour. It is not a question and answer session. It is a business meeting. I'm busy, this is number twelve, I am busy. All the council members and the mayor are busy. The city staff and administrator are busy. Everybody is busy. At this meeting, I will do what I have to do. I will do it fast as possible and respect the time of others. That's the end. Thank you.
Thank you, Tepes. Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for visitor comments. If you'd like to make some comments, please drop in and make some comments. Five minutes, and please be polite. We are here as volunteers. I hope you're in the city along. See you in the city. Okay. First item on our agenda is employee length of service recognition mission to Sergeant Evan Eustace for five years with the City of St. Helens. Uh, I actually just was with Evan this morning, looking at some citizen driven stuff and, uh, he's a wonderful asset to our community and, uh, um, we definitely really, really appreciate you. And if you'd like to make comments, uh, for Tepes as well, you can lower your mask, okay? But I'm gonna put my mask on and step up and hand him his, uh, certificate here. I guess we gotta do this.
Let's do it against us whilst we don't have people in the background.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate you. Appreciate you. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
My proud police force out there, and you are Utah's hat, so definitely appreciate you very much.
Well, represented very well at the Citizens Day. It was great to see officers and support staff, so. And I'm excited to be talking about moving forward to support our department, our staff.
Yep, as some of the citizens know, most do, um, that we're moving forward in, uh, building a new police facility, which is over fifty years old. Okay, uh, our next item on the agenda is South Columbia County Chamber of Commerce Annual Report.
Hi, hello, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So, um, we have some presentations for the council.
Excellent.
And, um, I wanna introduce myself, my name is Susanna Hensley, I'm part of the board, I'm, uh, I'm part of the chamber as well to E-Rose Credit Union. And, um, I am the vice president of the board, and then we have Dana.
I'm Dana Lethrop, I'm one of the board members for the South Columbia County Chamber of Commerce.
And, um, and Haley, who is another board member.
Yes, Haley Iverson, um, board member.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to, for being here, so, um, the first part that we have in here, we wanted to show you, uh, who our active board members are. So, um, we have, all of board members are volunteers and ambassadors as well. Um, I don't have the list of ambassadors, but the chamber has been fully supported and run by volunteers. So, um, the board, the president and interim treasurer is Alex Tarduff with Escapus Fire. Uh, the vice president is myself, Susanna Hensley with E-Rose Credit Union. Secretary is Tenroja with Tenroja Design. We have an open position for treasurer. Uh, the board, we have a board member Haley Iverson with Edward Jones. Dana Lethrop with Rio Icing Art, and board member David Wazilek with Hamilton Insurance. And we have two other open positions. So, um, we are here very excited to let you know, um, that for on next, for next, for the rest of the year, we are focusing all attention in our core values to help our members, uh, our existing members and to be able to meet our mission and vision. Uh, the chamber mission is a strength of business, is always a priority. The mission is to create and promote economic vitality in South Columbia County in collaboration with other entities and organizations, uh, that are supporting our business. So, um, as I mentioned before, the chamber is fully funded by the members and run by, uh, volunteers. And we have some volunteering opportunities, and we wanna extend the invitation to the City of St. Helens in case you have any officials or employees who wanna vote, um, who wanna volunteer either with a board member position or a chamber ambassador. Um, and the chamber ambassadors are currently working on different committees that we have. And what the chamber is doing right now is gonna revise the different committees that we have to make sure that they reflect the needs of the businesses. After the pandemic, there's been other resources available during the last year. We believe that some of our ambassadors committees can be consolidated and focus all our energy in what our business needs the most. So, um, currently, we are, um, hiring a part-time member relationship manager uh, and a grant grider. So, we did have an office coordinator, um, and she moved out of town, and we, and it was a part-time position. We were intending to this year hire so, an additional employee to be able to relate, to be the relationship manager. So, um, but we decided as of right now, we're gonna, um, hire a grant grider because we believe the chamber has so much potential and we can secure additional funds having somebody who can, uh, dedicate their time to look for additional funds available out there that they're missing opportunities that we don't have the bandwidth to cover. So, um, the exciting part, what have we, what we are going, what we have going on right now. So, um, we were gonna start, well, we started in-person meetings. But we have the new restrictions, so, um, we still wanna support our members to host some person meetings event to build more network opportunities and to market themselves and to promote themselves. So, um, we, we have for the rest of the year, a couple of meetings, we have a coffee and commerce meetings. We are adding a happy hour meeting to make sure our members and people in the community that will be open to all, think of our network. If they are not available in the morning, the afternoon will be a different market that we can target. Um, we have ribbon cuttings. And next year, we are hoping, uh, to be able to have our awards, our yearly awards and yearly, um, in report with a banquet and silent auction. Uh, unfortunately, with, with the pandemic, we were not able to do it. And the last one that, um, that was created was successful, and I think that this will be a great event for our business uh, to promote itself and build network and like recognize all the work they've been doing. So, sponsorship events, we have an ability to receive a flyer. Our hundred years building celebration, September eighteen. We are very excited because with this event, we're, we are, we're hoping to bring a lot of people to our community to star on the chamber and bring them over all the way to Main Street. So, so we can benefit men, uh, business owners that are outside the Main Street area. So, um, and so we have really exciting things going on, um.
We have live music, we have some food vendors, we'll be hosting a gift shop in the chamber building during that weekend, so we can have some small vendors, um, up there. We have a trolley coming from Portland that will be offering rides for patrons so they can go up and down um, from Highway thirty down here to the downtown district and then back up. We have some self-guided, uh, tours, walking tours, um, we'll be utilizing the chamber buildings conference room to, um, host some beautiful old photos of St. Helens, um, throughout the years the historical society is teaming up with us to put on a great presentation there and.
We have the gift shop that's are going on too and a few other things on the works. So, um, we're pretty excited, we are gonna encourage everyone to dress up on the like the twenties fashion. And, um, I have three kids, and my oldest one is twenty-one, my youngest one is twenty-eight, and I don't think they have ever rode a train or a rolling, so it will be a totally, so it will be really exciting to be able to bring our kids. And that's one of the other things that we are looking into, advertise it to the school district that this is happening. So the parents can have an opportunity to bring their kids and do a family event. And maybe they can, they can shop and they can stop for dinner and spend time at the water room. And who knows, maybe take, uh, from the St. Helens Marina, the ride to the Sand Island, because that's a, um, a great place that we have that a lot of people is not taking advantage of it. So, um, yeah, we're really excited and looking forward to do a lot more of this. So, um, the other events that we have, uh, in the rest of the year, we're continuing with the quarterly gift shops. So, um, is, well, we're having this one and then we're gonna have another one in the fall.
Yeah, we have one planned that, uh, will be the longest one, it starts on Black Friday and is four weekends long COVID-preventing. Um, last year, we had to cut it down to three weekends because they did a shutdown right when we launched it. Um, but we've had great turnout thus far for the ones that we have hosted, this will be our third one. Um, with our fourth one to come again in, uh, the end of November.
And this is an event that we are really excited about because our small business owners, a lot of them are doing business online. They don't have a shop or a present, so, uh, we want them to provide this place so they can start selling their products. So, um.
And also to network with the community and let them know we're out here, we've had some great local artisans and creators and artists come in. Everything from jewelry making to goat soap and, um, uh, some woodworking items. It's been a lot of fun to meet the, the local artists and creators.
Did you, did you say goat soap?
Goat. Goat milk soap, yeah, yeah. It's fantastic.
So, uh, the other event that we are working on, um, on collaborating with is in September fourteen, uh, the chamber uh, is the SBA week for, um, for small business appreciation, so there, um, their credit unions are coming together and actually C D E is the one who we are collaborating in on this. Um, so I think Paul will have more information on this, but, uh, what we are doing is a small business week celebration. And that it will be, uh, providing like the workforce and other services available to, to businesses, and we are gonna house it at the chamber. Um, and they are doing it, uh, in other cities like Vernonia, Rania, Plaskanay, so, uh, you can speak to that later on. We are really excited to be able to collaborate with, with them and other local organizations to support their business. So, um, what, uh, we have a partnership opportunity and a proposal for the city. So, um, we are, um, extending this proposal to the City of Escapus. And we have met with Paul, with the Columbia County Economic Development Team as well. And the proposal is for the Columbia County Visitor Center. So, so what we wanna do as a visitor, what we're hoping to do as a visitor center is offer extended business hours. Uh, complement existing cities tourism efforts and events. Offer comfortable and secure working environment for visitors or everyone in the community. A workspace in common area open to all non-justor members and bring Wi-Fi. We have, um, um, a great location, the other benefit that we have is a prime location. And I tourism get away to promote businesses in the city in which we serve. So, we have our building with the visitor center. And, uh, unfortunately, at this time, we cannot offer the hours, we cannot cover the hours in overall these services to non-members. So, um, what, these are the services and benefits we are, uh, trying to provide. And we're requesting from the city some funding, annual funding for full-time visitor center office coordinator. We're estimated a salary of fifty to twenty dollars an hour and an annual facility maintenance fees that is just the cost of the property taxes. Um, then, there will be, uh, no other utility fees because the chamber will be providing that with our building. So, the role of these part, of these full-time positions that we are looking to obtain funding, it will be a multifunctional individual that provides information to visitors. Seek additional funding from other sources with, and we will, the, the, the chamber grant grider will be mentoring this person to be able to, to write and look for grants. Um, working, this person will work in collaboration with local and statewide organizations dedicated to support tourism. Um, we want them to seek other opportunities in, in the city with different, with the businesses that we serve or the businesses that are located in our community. Um, we want this person to support and collaborate with other organizations supporting areas as our Main Street and Sand Island and provide visitor center, center updates to the city council. So, um, the reason why we are coming in today and requesting this is because our existing visitor center is currently operating by appointment only. So, people who stop by, there is nobody there. Um, we are receiving a lot of phone inquiries and we're offering limited hours and cover it as we can. Uh, right now, the chamber do not have the financial capacity to continue funding the visitor center. So, due to that, unfortunately, we will have to remove our visitor center sign. Um, if funds are not secure to reopen the visitor center to offer these services to the community.
What has become glaringly apparent, um, between the short period of time where I was the interim, uh, office assistant at the chamber last year um, and during the time that we had our paid staff member, is that the majority of traffic, uh, both telephone and in-person to the actual building itself is for the purpose of visitor center regarding St. Helens specifically and also Columbia County. Um, we do have the visitor center sign and it is right on Highway thirty, so it is an automatic stop for tourists and people, um, local and outside of the area coming through. Um, while that remains, that continues to bring in the traffic and unfortunately, we're unable to meet the needs of those visitors. Um, in the past, we, as the chamber organization, um, have been able to, uh, acquire and distribute large amounts of, um, material regarding the local areas, including, um, magazines, maps, and other information. Um, due to some decreased, uh, membership revenue that's in part due to COVID um, and then the inability to have a, an executive director, um, that would actually drive income for the chamber. Uh, we have not been able to maintain enough funds to keep, keep it staffed full-time for those purposes. Um, which does ultimately the city a great disservice, uh, due to the fact that people are reaching out to the chamber they automatically associate it as part of the city itself, and when we're unable to help them in that manner, it's, it's difficult.
To our members as well, because our time is being spent trying to make sure that these, uh, services are met. Our, um, members aren't getting the attention that they deserve from us.
And we, we love the visitor center, there is so much potential in there. We wish we could fund that, but unfortunately, this is a really hard decision that the board has to make where we can, we're gonna have to use the funds that we have to provide the service to our existing members. But we do wanna, um, we are, we wanna do the visitor center, we said, we believe there are so many opportunities out there, there are so many grants. It will open the door to support so many other businesses, not just Main Street or Sand Island, we can expand to the other areas in the city. And I think St. Helens is a little different than Escapus and Vernonia, um, because you have the Main Street, but then you have all these other, uh, like malls you know, that are not covered and that a lot of people visit, and, uh, I think there is other, other resources and other places that people is still to discover and so much to offer from the city and our businesses that we can highlight. Um, in addition to a lot of grants and money out there that is not being, um, that we're not secure, now we're not using it because we don't have a visitor, someone who manage the visitor center to be able to seek for those findings. So, um, pretty much that's our presentation, do you guys have any questions for us?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you tell me more about your partnership with Main Street? As you know, we've invested a lot of money and time into Main Street and tried to get that off the floor just recently.
So, Main Street are an existing members with us. And so, all we have is a membership. Uh, some of the Main Street, um, boards are part of our ambassadors, volunteers. So, pretty much, we do, they, they, they volunteer their time to help with some events and they kind of communicate, but that's pretty much the extent of our relationship, we do not have other than, than active membership as same as other, other businesses.
Yeah, we've actually done quite a bit of research on what that relationship has looked like historically and what it could possibly be in the future. Uh, especially considering the fact that the chamber itself has had such low funding and has historically been in a difficult place financially. Um, and we all, we have a relatively new board, um, the majority of us came on brand new at the start of the pandemic. Um, uh, unfortunately, due to the organization type with the Chamber of Commerce um, being a membership-based organization where their funding comes from memberships from the community and the Main Street program being a five oh one C three, which is a non-membership, um, organization. Uh, they structurally can't really align or cooperate as a single entity, which is actually one opportunity we were kind of investigating. Um, but it's, we've reached out directly to Sherry Stewart at the state level and, uh, we've had a lot of conversations there, and unfortunately, that's not really, um, a viable option. Um, so right now, the relationship really is just that the Main Street is a, an active member. We, um, coordinate and cooperate on events and, um, work with them for, we do a lot of the marketing portion of, of, um, what they, what they're supporting. Um, but that's really the extent of it.
Yeah, this dovetails with Counselor Chilton's, uh, question and, uh, just looking at, uh, you're focusing on your current values and your, and your vision to create and promote economic vitality in, uh, South Columbia County. Uh, tell me about your partnership with C C E T, with the Columbia County Economic Team. Now, it seems like your missions are almost identical. And so, how have you partnered and what are you, what's your partnership relation with C C E T?
So, a-again, it's actually very similar, the fact that thus far, they have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce. We work with them on, um, different events and different activities that are going on between the two, we support them with our, our marketing aspect. Um, we've also reached out to them to see if there could be a further, um, partnership in the future so that everyone can serve the community, because ultimately, each of these organizations, while working individually, we all have the same main goal, which is supporting our community and boosting the economic vitality of South Columbia County. With C E T, it's a little bit different because they actually serve a broader, um, range, whereas with Main Street, they actually serve more of a, a microcosm. And so, um, so we don't a hundred percent align in whom we serve. And also, some of our services are a little bit different, um, just because they're related to the, the chamber itself in regards to some, um, uh, legislative advocacy, um, and a few other things, but. So again, our relationship at this point, while we've investigated other options, is currently just the fact that they are a member and we work actively together to support each other's projects.
And Paul, up on that, do you attend their board meetings or did they attend your board meetings?
Um, no.
Thank you.
And I just know that, like, three years ago, we donated a bunch of money to get an upgrade to that building. Uh, I think it was about three years ago that we did that. And then following year, we kind of the fee set, and then this year, we're, we're Main Street, so we're kind of throwing out between the three, you know, two partners that you have. And we have to share the love, otherwise, um, it seems like it's not fair. So that's kind of where we're at this year with, we're Main Street this year, and that's kind of where our funding is and looking at funding a part-time position with that. Unfortunately, um, you know, I don't know how that could work. As I said, to Dana, it doesn't sound like it can because it's a nonprofit versus a for-profit.
Yeah, we looked into that quite extensively, unfortunately, like, we thought that'd be a great option.
We activated a nonprofit that started to, to be able to obtain your grants for the chamber. The chamber itself is, serves, is, is small business like the Main Street, but we serve everyone in the, in the community like Vernonia, Plask, Vernonia, City of Columbia City, St. Helens and Escapus, not just the Main Street of St. Helens. Uh, because we don't have funding from, from the county or from the cities, we are only members of the state. So our, our services are provided directly to our members. We do have a few, some options available to non-members at a fee, but we don't have the funding to be able to provide free services to all the business in the community without securing any funding.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't sure if you were, if you were, you were finished to. So what, what would you say are the, uh, you know, the opportunity, the challenges to, to membership, you know, what? You know, what are the ops, you know, I think you're always trying to, to get folks to, to join. But what have you found to maybe be the challenges or obstacles to increasing that, that, that membership?
Well, the board member that is right now, we always started in the first quarter of 2020. So the main challenge happened in the pandemic. And we, when we started, less than a month of beginning or joining the board. We, the existing boards kind of left, left, they exited. And, and we find out that it was the ED, the executive director was terminated in our first meeting. So we didn't have an executive director or relationship manager. So I think, and all that is based to the pandemic. So I think the chamber has grown and has done a great job with all the support of volunteers. So we are right now in a really good position to bring the right person to start helping us grow. And I think the main challenge is that we don't have an executive director. And that was due to the pandemic and not being able to be out there meeting members and talking about the benefits that we offer.
There has been, you know, issues in the past historically with the chamber even prior to our arriving regarding consistency of the board and assistance from them, leaving a lot of the burden of the work on the executive directors. They have high turnover and, you know, dissatisfaction amongst the, the executive directors historically. And so we have run into issues regarding positive public view to a certain extent regarding those issues. And then getting a, appropriate staff members on due to our low funding, which it comes from that low membership. And so we're kind of in this strange catch 22. We've discussed it at several of our recent board meetings where we are needing additional funding to, to fund the staff that we require. But we require the staff in order to get the funding. And so we've gone through other flexible avenues, including the, the gift shop that did really well. We've leased out the building for a short-term period last year to Crypt TV. And now we have a long-term tenant, which is Safe of Columbia County. And so that does offer some, a small amount of continuing revenue that supplements our membership revenue. And we have this event, which luckily, we've had a few donors and so that will give us a small boost as well. But it's very difficult to accomplish especially large tasks when it's a hundred percent volunteer base. And all of our board members are either business owners themselves or have positions in their, in their businesses that does require a lot of time. And so additional hours on top of that, plus other volunteer opportunities that the, each of us partake.
What I have to say is that during this last year of COVID, it has been a good year for the chamber because we were able to, to learn about those challenges, these executive directors. And we were able to build a foundation. And our goal is to make sure the chamber is self-sustainable, not dependable of being run by volunteers. And that the person that comes over, an executive director or relationship manager will have the support. So that's why our committees are so important. And an active, committed board of directors is important as well to make sure that, that we are successful.
I think this is a great event. We supported it and we donated five hundred bucks for it.
Yes.
And if you can support it even more, I think Judy Tons approached me and, and has welcomed any, anybody from the city or the council to dress up. I think there's some costumes, costumes of the whole mayor that if you're, you'd like to assume a role, we can welcome it as well.
Well, as long as there's some goat soap there I can buy. But I've never experienced a goat soap. I just may dress up. Definitely would promote what you're going through on this right here as well because we are unaware of how you guys were even struggling. We did, I guess, we did donate probably about twelve or fifteen thousand to the upgrade of that remodel, a huge remodel there. We really stepped up because we do understand the significance of the chamber and what it does and how it serves our communities. So.
Yeah, now we're on the precipice of requiring the, a brand-new furnace, an AC unit, a long-term tenant is a requirement at this point. And unfortunately, we don't have, you know, capital queued up that can cover such large expenses. We were blessed to have a couple of, some PPP loans to fund our staff that we did have for a while. But it is regarding continued employee and covering these other big projects is just kind of out of reach considering our current income.
And I want to say that the direction you're heading with Grant Rider is crucial. That is where you're gonna get this person. We'll deliberate about it later because we don't make decisions in this meeting, uh, we do the evening. But that is vitally important.
Agreed.
I have one more question.
Yeah.
Have you guys asked the county? This sounds like something the county should be footing the bill for, if I'm just being honest, right?
So we, we talked to CTE and we talked to you guys and we were planning on talking to the city of the
We have a knock.
Post we come up to the market, so we can, we sure will look into that.
We have a plan, right, to just, to discuss these same things with multiple cities that we serve and also the county itself. But a lot of the other organizations are in the same boat where there's a lot of ask and very little funds available.
Sure, and I, and I hope that you will recognize us, no matter what happens later, that, that we have, I mean, if you look at your record, well, the fifteen thousand dollars and I don't think anybody else has.
Yeah, and we, we really appreciate that.
So utilize us as well the city already did three years ago.
Yeah. And, and we have find out that, you know, the cost to run this visitor center per year is greater than what we can afford. And the funds that you guys provided is helped by the furniture and have this great visitor center and great working space. That's why to be able to, to have a good visitor center right now, there is not a lot of investment to be done because we receive money from other organizations as well to be able to make the chamber, to make it look the way it looks and be.
And fulfilling the way that we want to. And so I think we're, we have all the tools. We have all the tools. We just need that extra little bit to really make it all happen.
And all we are asking is money to help the visitor center to increase tourism and support to all the businesses in this community. So, you know, we are open to owner, other partnerships if you guys have some, some way that you think we can partner with. But as Dennis, Dennis says, there are some limitations to what the businesses can do with their funding on their own entity. So, yeah, it's visitor center, we are not asking for business funding for, for the small businesses. So the chamber is for the visitor center.
I'd like to be very clear regarding our decision to approach you guys specifically about the visitor center and the signage that is there and our decision to remove it if we're unable to maintain it. But it would be a disservice to the visitors to come to town and expect and open an active visitor center and advertise as such as we do have on the building and then be unable to offer that service. So it's absolutely nothing against the city, it's nothing, you know, against that relationship. We're trying to build that and maintain it and, you know, grow that in the future. But I know, unfortunately, we're unable to offer that service and it just is.
Unfortunately, you've been through a lot of different records in a short amount of time.
Yeah.
And I've witnessed them all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, and there has to be some stabilization and leadership as well in order to move this thing forward.
Yes.
I'm not trying to top down, I'm just trying to make an observation.
Absolutely.
Because I know with all volunteers and I get that. So, I mean, we're gonna, we're definitely gonna top this over. It's the chamber. I'll look forward to the celebration. I think that's gonna get the word out too. I think you need to get the word out, approach some of the bigger corporations that have some money, maybe Cascade, I don't know. You know, reach out to them in our county. We are in South County. We are probably three force of the population of Columbia County. So over there at that commissioner's office, it'd be a fairly decent house. This is my opinion.
Yeah, so as I said, we are gonna be asking, but unfortunately, if we do not, we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that that sign was coming on and we are not trying to.
And I'll probably dress up and be there to promote.
Dress up?
I've never seen you, you know.
Like Mr., you know, I don't know, we'll see.
Well, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Leah.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is Columbia County Economic Team's semi-annual report. Paul Volvo, executive director.
Good afternoon. Did I hear you say I could take my mask off? Thank you. Meetings all day. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come report to you again. I, I am known to overshare, so I've tried to keep it brief. I'll try and go through it fast, but I will absolutely invite all, all questions or any interest in, in any additional detail. This has been an important process for us to come report to you quarterly. I mean, we're calling it semi-annual, but we'll, we'll be back next quarter. It's, it's done a tremendous amount of good for us in terms of our, our self-accountability as well as our accountability to you as a very significant member and a member with constituents that care about how you invest. So if we could go to the, Kathy, you go. Thank you. These are the, these are the things that I'd like to hit. We got a lot of stuff going on. I think most of it fits under these bullets. But I'll try and rock right on through here and, and hopefully something will catch your attention. You'll go, what? Next slide. So communication engagement. We've really placed a priority on this. And some, aside from reaching out during COVID, that's kind of when I arrived with the virus. And aside from reaching out and doing a ton of Zooms, we've actually been able to, to accomplish some concrete actions. We did a Columbia County, or Columbia Economic Team rebrand. Question might be, why? That was largely for external audiences. One of our strengths as an organization in working with and negotiating with investment prospects is that we are, we are not a government entity. When we were called the County Economic Team, we're perceived as a government entity. And so, so it kind of fights with itself and there's a little bit of a trust issue there. The other thing is, we're perceived in the county as a, as a, as a county entity. We get a lot of county phone calls. And, and so part of the rebranding, we, we developed a new brand voice. You can see that on our website, was simply streamlining the name. Is it caused a little dislocation? Yes, it's fine if you call us CSET. People are used to calling us CSET. Call us anything you want. That's our actual legal name. Just, that, that was the rationale behind the branding. And, and we launched that with our, our new website, which I think we were still talking about that or talking about that launch happening last time we reported. Invite you to go there. It is very heavily weighted to links. Yes, we generate new content, but heavily weighted to links and a lot of direct links to city services, county services, that sort of thing. Make it an easy navigation for folks. We're collecting analytics on it and measuring that on a quarterly basis. Our Small Biz Hub website that we stood up for the, really for information around COVID and because we, we needed a new vehicle, we're, we're maintaining that. And we're still using that for announcements around, around the pandemic and guidelines and that sort of thing. We thought that was gonna tail off. It's kind of picking up again. That is there. Our plan is to convert that over to the website for the Small Business Resource Center. So just be kind of a natural transition. We've already got that audience and, and we'll just convert that over. We issued our, our annual report for 2020, 2021. I think John shared that very graciously with you. That too was important to us from an accountability standpoint. We needed to look at our own report card. We needed to issue a report card to our membership, also really to our stakeholders. The folks like the chamber and the chambers in Rainier and Klatz and I that, that we collaborate with and rely upon for, for a lot of our, our outreach and engagement. We, you may recall, we launched a news, dating newsletter last year. We have scaled that back as we hoped the pandemic was scaling back to one, one time a week and alerts as needed. That's also likely a function that will alternate with the SBRC. It'll be, we'll, we'll take on, conceptually, we'll take on like a couple, twice, twice a month, broader economic news and events. And then the SBRC would be much more small business oriented and, and that sort of thing. Well, we are, we are keeping that, that open because we're continuing to actually pick up subscribers, surprisingly, with that. We, in addition to the outbound communication, we are maintaining a very consistent and now in-person schedule of coordination with, with cities. Probably more informal coordination with the city of St. Helens. We, we have a monthly, for example, coordination session with the city of Escapos. I think city staff here, we probably have more interaction on and have more, more plates in the air with than, than any other city. But we are, we are diligent about coordinating with every city, every month at least once. And some, it just picks up more. Klatz and I would be a good example right now. Chambers as well in terms of attending their meetings, working with them to communicate out events or announcements that folks want, particularly grant announcements and that sort of thing, as well as our regional stakeholders. That's becoming even more important with the EDA and USDA funding that's coming down as well as some issues that we'll talk about in a second, which are, which are big issues and we need the regional team with us. The point of all that being, showing up is ninety percent. And, and we're making a, a significant effort to show up. And so we feel like you need to know what we're doing and if you think we're not, then we need to hear that too. Big picture and collaboration. There we go. I'll just touch on these and tell you why we're involved in them. Regional solutions, the governor has regional solutions coordinators for all of the regions she's designated throughout the state. We worked with them quite a bit during, during the pandemic. There were a couple of regional solutions, recovery and COVID and this and that and the other teams. We've streamlined that down now. We're actually doing more proactive stuff through, with the regional solutions team. There's a housing assessment underway. Why? Because the largest investment project the county's ever seen, well, has seen in a couple, three decades, is underway and it's targeting a small community that hasn't done a housing assessment and we don't know what that even looks like. It didn't make sense to just focus on Klatz and I. We live in Columbia County. People commuting twenty-five miles is not a, not a thing. So we're, we convinced the regional solutions team to look at that as a countywide deal. St. Helens has already done one recently, so we coordinated with you all to, that, that will be just one of those nice sharing of information things. But we, we've gotten the support of the city of Vernonia, city of Rainier, city of Klatz, city of Columbia City as well as Klatz and I obviously is on there. And in fact, we're, we're applying, we're working with COLPAC to apply for a grant to do not only the assessment, but the production scheduling as well as the implementation plan to get that done. And we felt like it would have a much stronger chance of getting funded if it was actually a countywide effort. So we get everybody signed on board. We're collaborating. And that's an important one because that'll be an important project for this, for this county. Transportation and rail, also because of NEXT, I've been talking quite a bit more with ODOT Rail. And interestingly enough, the discussion of moving the St. Helens Switching Yard has come up. And so we're kind of looking at that a little bit. It's early days. The state would really like to switch it or shift it. And they think they've got property. I would imagine maybe the city would like to shift it and I would imagine some of the commuters would like to shift it. And so out, out of concern over potential for nine hundred more rail cars from NEXT Renewables, that may be the impetus to help us make some, make some progress on this. So we're involved in that. Federal funding is crazy. There's USDA funding, there's EDA funding. Federal funding is crazy. There's USDA funding, there's EDA funding, and we're trying to help coordinate that on a regional basis because some of the grant programs are so large that if you don't have a huge ask, you haven't got a chance. And so we're working closely with Coal Pack, as well as with the regional solutions team, to try and identify those projects. Infrastructure is another area where there's a separate funding tranche coming through, and it's not just rail, it's other larger infrastructure issues. That's not an area we have a ton of expertise in, but we know how it affects business, and we know what kind of demands we're getting from recruitment prospects. So we're a participant in that. We're certainly not a leader in that. Brownfields is something that we're involved with Coal Pack, as is the city and other folks. New brownfield program came through with funding. We need to identify priority sites. I know one in St. Helens that I'm recommending. So we are very interested in being part of that, because it's not just this year. It's an ongoing program, and we can address a lot of brownfield issues in this county through that program. Broadband, as you know, Coal Pack is leading a countywide, really more of a regional broadband process. We're involved in that. The city kind of has led the way in aspects on that, and what the city is doing isn't prohibited or precluded by, or nor doesn't really preclude what the larger regional effort is. We see it as a business recruitment issue. We also see it as an economic issue from the pandemic in terms of people being able to do business, people being able to do business from home, being able to go to school, and what is the dislocation that creates. So we just think it's a priority, and so we're... I am not a technology guy, but I can argue policy and advocate, so I'm in it. Regionally significant industrial sites. This is one that we kind of chatted about. Rachel Barry is taking the lead. We're fully in support of the interest in designating a regionally significant industrial site for the property down, the industrial property, the old Boise site. So we're on board with that. Mostly, we're supportive at this point, but I'm sure there will be a time with the application, getting the designation, where we'll be bringing statistics and economics and anecdotal to the party on that. I don't think there will be a problem. I think actually, in our discussion the other day, we actually saw some opportunities, maybe even strengthen that application. Floodplain mapping accreditation. Why am I bringing that up? There's a floodplain mapping issue in the Scapuce area, which just came to our attention, and we have two motivations here. One is to make sure that the accreditation of the levy happens, because that's important to homeowners, but also to get the current modeling that's being done corrected in terms of its assumptions and the standards that FEMA and the Corps of Engineers have applied. Because if we don't, the 300 acres that Scapuce brought into their urban growth boundary, OMC, the airport, PCC Training Center, and in fact, the city's street system and their utility system are all jeopardized. It was alarming at first. Now it's just concerning. We have a meeting this afternoon. There's a state floodplain coordinator. We think there's a way to help navigate this to a pathway back. Just meeting with Congresswoman Bonamichi. She's very familiar with FEMA and the Corps. She's glad to know about the issues. She's also glad I didn't ask her for help on it yet. So that's not something that we expected to be in, but it's, we're in a part of the country where that happens. And so we need to protect the homeowners, but we also need to protect the current investment in commercial and industrial land there, as well as future investment as employment lands.
We just have to credit the dike in the back along the slough? Is that what it's...
Well, the dike has to be certified or accredited, but to get that, you have to have an approved floodplain map. And the long and short of it is, I spent a lot more time in this month than I wanted to, is, here's an example from a city perspective. FEMA standard is that cities only design their stormwater drainage systems for a 25-year floodplain. In fact, cities along rivers and the city of Scapuce often designed for 100-year floods, and that's what Scapuce did. So in the study, in the modeling, they didn't consider that Scapuce even had a stormwater drainage system. That's a problem, as you can imagine. What it does is it shows you maps standing at five feet of water where there's drains. So, you know, the drainage district or the company, the corporation, it's an all-volunteer board. They don't really have staff doing this stuff. They have been wrangling this for 14 years. And fortunately, as it got to a point where the city of Scapuce and the county were going to be asked to sign off on these maps, some of us found out about it and invited ourselves to the party. So I think there's a pathway to get everybody what they need by clarifying the standards, running some models with new assumptions, which Melody Olson at the state is running down money to get that modeling done, and give the homeowners, the farmowners, reassurance they need from the accreditation for FEMA flood insurance.
You sound like an expert in it now.
Well, let's hope that continues, because it ain't over yet. Anyway, I've had some of my board members ask me why we're in this, and I say, "Talk to your other board members, because they own property there." So South County Roundtable, that is continuing. I think we're targeting this fall for another update to our partners. And in fact, that's being used this week as a forum really to prioritize brownfield sites. So that process is going well. And industrial investment, I mentioned Next. That's a $2 billion investment. If that is located there, that chunk of the county, basically Port Westward, would represent about 50% of our tax base in this county. It's an important one from an infrastructure perspective. It's an important one really from a leverage perspective, if it can help us trigger things like transportation changes, housing changes, et cetera, and get some ongoing... So we are, they are a member. We are advocating for them. We are trying to help make connections, get them introduced to folks, run down issues, questions. And most of all, we're trying to get them to communicate very openly and transparently in the community and emphasize the importance of that. They're in the permitting process right now, big permits, air quality permits, water quality permits, land use permits, all of that. Lots of public hearings coming up. If anybody's got nothing better to do, we'll get you the whole schedule. But that's a major, major investment. And personally, I think it would be important to get, we have a state that is, has a little bit of a reputation for killing energy projects, and this is on the better side of energy. I've been involved in all kinds of energy, but this is on the better side of energy, and I would love to see not only Oregon, but this county improve an energy project, particularly one that employs like this. And then slightly smaller picture is, we're in process of strategic planning for Columbia Economic Team, two- to five-year strategic plan. We'd be a little further along if I didn't have some of these other things going on, but we've got a session with the executive committee this week. We're going to kick that forward and we'll do that poll together and discuss with our members, our priorities that we're looking forward to. How am I doing on time? I forgot to set my timer, Kathy. Business recruitment, retention and expansion, the pace is picking up. I've told you that before. Actually, we have fewer tire kickers now than actual bona fide investment projects. We're on, we've got mostly focused on manufacturing, some focus actually on recycling of plastics and glass, which I kind of like being in that side of the economy, too. And we're shortlisted on two projects. We're active in nine. We got three just in the past week. I've got to run over to the office during a Zoom call and submit another proposal, so it is picking up quite a bit. We have six, what I like more of, local and regional prospects that are more organic. These are businesses that want to expand and much prefer those. We don't have to attract them here for the first thing. They're already zoned correctly for the second thing. And helping a business grow tends to help other businesses grow around it. So organic growth is my favorite thing, and we've got six of those. We have one very dynamic project that we're kind of nurturing along, and it came from an after-hours email from John Walsh. You know, some of my friends, I don't really like getting after-hours emails. This one came in at like 8:00 at night, and it was somebody who had visited some sites here five years ago and was curious. The person they talked to wasn't here, and John said, "Well, why don't you talk to this guy?" We got together, John, Rachel and I. We went and showed them the site. It's a forest products, it's a building products, and actually, you know, small building construction project. Very, very interesting, very credible developer. They're very interested in being part of a community as opposed to just putting a plant here, and frankly, they're from Oregon. And so I'm trying to carefully nudge that one along and nurture that along, and the conversations are going well. They would love to be in St. Helens. They've really kind of fallen in love with St. Helens, so there's property here to build that. Coordination with the port, we are, the port hasn't actually hired a new business development person since the last one stayed here for a cup of coffee. But we coordinate with the port on every single prospect and project and submission, which is great, because that's kind of brought one of their people, Gina Cisco, in more into it. She can do a lot of the organizational work on it. She is also leading kind of a big-picture thing in industrial lands survey. The port is hiring, has hired a consultant that's going to do, is going to log all the industrially-zoned lands, light industrial, all the entitlements, all of the infrastructure, any transportation challenges, all of that, give us a complete, comprehensive picture of what we have. Because we don't have a ton of publicly-owned land. We have a lot of privately-held industrial land, and it's a bit, I'd say it's a jigsaw puzzle, but the pieces don't fit together. And so this will give us a 360 view, and it's great that the port's funding that. We're on the panel that's helping with that. Rachel's on the panel. And I think we actually meet tomorrow, because the consultant came back in like 36 hours with the scope of work. So it's moving along. I think it's probably a late fall, early winter thing. But really looking forward to that in terms of strategic development.
Do you know if the port will try to target any of those properties for their own?
You mean for them to acquire?
Yeah.
Well, I've been whispering in their ear about a few.
Well, I think it would be, I think it would be a vital next step.
They, they, there, we've talked about a couple. And in fact, one of the projects that we had proposed, or we were shortlisted on, is aviation manufacturing. They don't have enough property at the airport, so they've got to deal with the Commerce Center owners as well as another adjacent property owner. They would simply, they'd have to consolidate the parcel for that prospect, so they'd just buy those. So they've got an appetite for it. I just, we just got to come up with the right deal for them. But once they actually see these and see them charted out and updated, I think the last one was done 10 years ago, something like that, they'd be a great bunch to talk to about, because they have different and better financing tools for these things. They can get patient capital from the state better than many can. So I'm trying to figure out how to get the economic team to buy some, I want to be a property owner, but I haven't got any positive reaction from the board about that, so we'll try to push it more towards the port. We are also increasing in our referrals. So we're trying to set up a Small Business Resource Center, but we're actually starting to become one to link local companies to capital, to business counseling and that sort of thing, which is a bit of a challenge, but it's also a really good sign, because I think the important thing is that we're seen as a bit of a go-to, but also that through the process of setting up the SBRC, we have made connections and made the relationships work and actually put people in contact with them, whereas a year ago, we didn't know who. The other good sign about that is businesses are looking to grow, expand. I talked to a gentleman the other day, and he wants to expand his. He can't where he is. He's an ag, but he could do something close by and buy a business in Washington and move it over, and they would complement each other. That's really encouraging economic activity for this county. We have, we manage the enterprise zone. You recall authorizing as a sponsor an enterprise zone application last year? Regrettably, Cascades did not meet its employment quota for the enterprise zone, so they were denied their benefits for last year. However, this is happening all over the state. So a bill was passed this year that allows an employment, what do they call it? It's like a variance, a two-year variance due to COVID. If you can demonstrate that it was due to COVID, whether it's because of product and production or ability to hire or outbreaks or whatever, if you can prove that, then you can ask for a variance from the sponsors. So we're supposed to hear from them tomorrow on whether they actually want to pursue that. So we may be coming back and revisiting and asking if you consider a variance for them for two years. They'll be paying their taxes this year. That's the good news. This would actually tack one year on their five-year authorization they've already got. And there's a St. Helens business that we were going to bring it to you earlier, but they took a construction and process variance, so they don't get assessed while they're constructing. Now they're open. They just moved in, looking to expand. And so we'll be bringing that application. It's a much smaller one. It's probably one-tenth the size of Cascades, but it's a great little company. And frankly, they're ready to start kind of marketing and moving into some other sectors. We're trying to help connect them with a marketing agency as well. So we'll be seeing you again. It'll be about the enterprise zone. I want to kind of give you a heads up, because the whole employment variance is a little bit of a new thing. Tourism, $93,000 in grants we've brought in this year. The projects are well underway, the bike stations, the Vernonia beautification is going a little bit better than we thought, because we're going to, instead of three murals, I think we're getting close to 10 murals in Vernonia. And if you've been in Vernonia lately, you know there's lots of walls that would like a mural, some that you can't paint on, but it's going to look terrific. And we've got a great partner in the Portland Street Art Alliance and the folks in Vernonia. We narrowly missed the Sand Island grant that same round. I'm still convinced that we can get something for Sand Island. That's my new favorite destination to be pointing people toward, and we're helping, we were asked by Travel Oregon to help with the Love Oregon Festival that's going to happen. It's an admission-only festival, I think 27th of August, something like that. Those are the kind of people we like to work with, because we gave them a list of names from Rachel and Shauna and Tina and business owners and historians and all these folks, and we gave them a list of people they needed to talk to, and they did. And so those are the kinds of folks, and this could become a recurring festival that they could try to grow year after year after year after year. Normally, we don't really get into that kind of stuff, but when Travel Oregon, they kind of controls over our money, asks you to do it, you do it, and it's actually benefiting. Travel Oregon is, receipts are still down. We're not seeing a lot of transient lodging tax money. It's something that when I met with the Chamber folks, we talked about the visitor center. That's something we should probably look at, is contributing a chunk of that money, because we don't have another visitor center in the area. So that's a conversation we just recently started that we're going to look at. The money's kind of weighed down. We are looking at applying for external grants. We've had great luck with Travel Oregon grants. We need to look at some external forces in order to be able to do some things that aren't just project-oriented like that. The CZ Trail, we've told you about, is completed. The interpretive signage project is completed. That was about a 25... It ended up costing us 23 instead of 25, and we got nine more signs out of it, so we felt good about that one. But that's completed for the entire duration, and Travel Oregon actually asked us to do a report on it for their biennial report to the legislature, which is good, because anything you can do to stay on their radar screen is a good thing. We are talking to a photography duo about going around the county when we did our website, and we were looking at that biennial report and other things. We find that we just need a better selection and a wider selection of professional photography. And we found a local bunch that we think we can kind of deal with them for a huge discount and loan them to other people. Just kind of leverage the... Just kind of leverage the relationship that way. So we, we'll want to contact city staff and Chamber staff and, and make sure we build a shot list for these folks that covers each community and, and as well as, as well as our own. And the EDA grants, I mentioned those earlier. Those are massive grants. The state is gonna get a chunk of dough, I don't know how many million dollars. Ironically, it's not going to Travel Oregon, it's going to the governor's office. I'm not gonna get in that fight, but there are competitive grants and what we're told is go big. Uh, it is a huge process, it's a pain in the neck. If you're gonna apply, go big. And so we are looking at the possibility of resurrecting the idea of a sort of a linear trail of water access from one end of the county to the other. Port, port is managing Scappus Bay, they're expanding all of that. But if we have spots there, if we have spots at Sand Island, we have spots at, uh, is it Dibley? We got Prescott Beach, we got Rainier, we got Claskonai. If we have a coordinated system, I think that's a very compelling case. I'm told that there's, there's already some strategic planning that was done along those lines. So those are due in March and we'll be, we'll be trying to convene people to talk about how to beef that up. Because that would be, I don't know, I'm thinking thirty, thirty-two million dollars to do that. Uh, by the time you do permitting and that sort of thing, that's big enough to make it worth the paperwork, I think. So we're, we're looking at that. Very competitive process, but, uh, we'll advocate for it. I know I'm running long. Uh, small business resource center, uh, three things I want to talk to you about on this. If you could just go to the next slide, Kathy. I just want to thank you for, for your leadership in stepping up on the small business resource center with the ARPA funds. Um, we are, we've now got a tentative commitment from Scappus since then and out of the county. Um, and I'm meeting with three more cities. I've already met with one. Uh, we may have the funding put together by the end of this month. Which means we could announce in September and we can start hiring in September or October and have this center up and running, uh, by the end of the year. People are sitting back and they're waiting and they're looking to see what other people are gonna do. And the city of St. Helens stepped up, so thank you. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a thing. It's the first one we've ever had here. Um, we've been made part of the extra, the SBDC network. So we'll have to, access to all of their tools, all of their training, all of their software, their entire network. They will provide forty percent of the funding all the way down the line, year after year after year after year. We just gotta go to the legislature and make sure that all of them get funded. But forty percent of that, they've given us access to some additional SBA funding. And as a member of the network, as I mentioned, we've got access to all, uh, all of those, all, all, all of their procedures, protocols, including the accountability that I think is important. Uh, because you can set up a small business center and ours is gonna be a hybrid. It's not just an SBDC, it'll be a resource center as well. This will be a full-time person. And we'll have the accountability in, in the reporting and the metrics and the financial accountability and all of that that you have to have with an SBDC. That's important to grow this and, and, and be able to correct. If you're, if your numbers aren't there, what do we have to correct to fix it? Rather than us just sort of inventing this thing as we go. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of advantages to being a hybrid and also being linked into the SBDC. And I think the accountability part is, is really critical. And as I mentioned, we're targeting this fall. I'm still upset, I wanted to announce it in June, but kind of had to get our stuff together, so. The, uh, Small Business Week, whoops. Small Business Week that, uh, this, the Chamber team mentioned. WANA and, uh, and Inroads Credit Union came to us and asked us if we'd partner on that. We're kind of throwing it together, we're building a plane in the air. It's celebrating small business, it's in conjunction with the SBA is having a Small Business Week thing. It's gonna be like, uh, we'll, we'll have the SBA web, web, webinar streaming. No big presentations, get everybody out, come out, get some of the food that the credit union has bought. PCC will be there, the Training Center will be there, uh, the workforce people in Northwest Oregon Works will be there. Kind of a little bit different take now that we're dealing with employee hiring and retention and all of that, uh, more than we have. It's gonna be the thirteenth or the seventeenth, three days in, in person. Thirteenth in Claskonai, fourteenth in St. Helens at the Chamber. Uh, thirteenth is at the Cultural Center in Claskonai. And then, uh, the fifteenth is at the Cabin in Vernonia. Don't know what kind of turnout we're gonna have, but, uh, it's time we started getting to and listening to and a chance to, to meet with small business people. And it seemed like a good excuse since SBA was providing the background. We'll have, uh, as I said, we're kind of putting it all together. You'll see a lot more, uh, promotion and, and, and marketing coming soon. Uh, one of those channels is, is Keep It Local and we've had a big change at Keep It Local, so I wanted to at least give you an update on that. Keep It Local is about a five-year-old program. Natasha Parvey, uh, ran it for that whole five years. Natasha has decided she wanted to graduate to doing some other things and so she did. And, uh, we had the opportunity to hire a young woman, Sierra Trass, who interned with us for free for four months, did a ton of really good work for us, uh, very technologically proficient. And, um, when Natasha said she wasn't gonna renew her contract, hmm, maybe this'd work. So we started talking to Sierra and she started July first. Um, she, she is local, we kept it local. Uh, she grew up in, uh, grew up in Claskonai, she was an honor student there. She was an honor student at Oregon State, sorry. And, uh, and she has a man, a business degree in management with a specialization in HR, which she is an ex, for someone her age is an exceptional reader of people. Which, this is a relationship business, that's what she's doing, which we found very advantageous. Best of all, she's a Gen Z. She does social media in her sleep. And, um, and that is kind of a turn that you're gonna see with Keep It Local, which is more customer-facing, um, little less business to business because we see that kind of as a Chamber role, whereas Keep It Local is getting people to buy local. So let's talk to consumers. And, uh, and so she developed, she developed a strategy, she developed a marketing plan. Uh, and that was before we started paying her. A month into the job, this is what she's doing. I'm, I'm kind of big on performance, I'm big on accountability and she doesn't disappoint. Um, there is a consumer survey underway as we, as, as I mentioned, we want to be more consumer-facing. If you, if you, if you haven't responded to it, I think it's, I think it's going away today. Uh, good response, I think we're in, you know, close to two hundred, uh, which is not, not, you know, it's a, it's a perfectly legitimate sample for that. She's also gonna do a business survey, probably launch it the week of the Small Business Celebration Week, uh, gathering data. Let's find out what people actually want, what they think was working, what wasn't working, what they think could work. We need to ask people these things before we just go do stuff. And so, uh, she's taking a great approach to this. Uh, you will see her around if you go to the next slide. The nice thing about social and digital, you got metrics, you can see what's happening. So you can see that just the increased activity and different kind of activity in somebody who lives on social, uh, we're starting to pick up reach, we're starting to pick up followers and we want to build traction because that is what Keep, Keep It Local provides as a platform for a business to immediately get additional traction because of the larger network and that sort of thing. So you will see us heavily driven to that. Not that she's just social, I mean, she is meeting with a lot of folks all over. It needs to be, it needs to be. Oh, she gave me a slide on this. Uh, this was like four days ago, that closes. Um, and, uh, it's just, let's ask people what they think and do it in the medium where we're gonna be communicating with them. Great approach. Brushed through that, still didn't make my time limit, did I? Uh, I would invite any questions, concerns, comments, anything I skipped over, anything I spent too much time on.
Yeah, you, you tell really an interesting and give us a really good snapshot of what your organization is all about, what you're doing, where you're going, where you've been. And, uh, that's a really good, exceptional, subjective, uh, analysis. On the flip side of that, some objective, I look for measurement tools with your yardstick to measure your, on your mission, your goals, you know? How have you achieved, where are you with your, with your goals? And how do you measure that? Uh, as I looked through this, uh, economic team, I only saw one or two dollar signs. And that, to me, I, I'm, I'm looking more at, is, is there possibly a spreadsheet or something? And we could, I mean, a financial spreadsheet that we could kind of take a look at at some time in a, in a report? So we know, uh, where the accountability is and where the objectivity is. That's all. And that's, that's constructive criticism from my part. Uh, I don't represent the other board members at all, but I'd really like to know about financials.
And that's, or you mean the, the organization financials?
No, I know, report.
Just overall?
Overall.
I see a wall. This county has a river. This county has a railroad. And connecting from the road across the railroad to the river seems to be a problem along the whole county. It looks like the river could be a huge financial engine, which you gotta get to it. And getting across the railroad is bothering all of our communities. And I've been interested in talking to the people on the other side of the river about a ferry boat. And one of the things that woodland is, and even the next one down is interesting is if they get a ferry boat, then they can talk to the state about connecting to I five better. I don't know whether if we had a ferry system, connect, talking to ODOT would be better to get across the railroad. That's one thing that seems to be holding up any major industry here. The next thing, I get a number of journals about where you place your business. And this is for the US. And Oregon is always absent from promoting the state, let alone Columbia County. Any help on getting outside the states for advertising about, hey, where we are?
So you're talking about paid space in those journals?
Yes, they are.
I can't speak for the state's budget, although I think, well, I know tourism was actually prohibited by, by rule from, from advertising. Um, we, we, uh, we would like to be doing more marketing and we, we are, uh, we did one round of analysis on employment and, and business sector data from the state. But it was two thousand eighteen, uh, because that was as soon as, the, the latest we could get. We're getting the twenty-twenty data and we want to do, uh, we want to do sector analysis and look for clusters and do more, and the point of that being targeting our marketing. So I, I'm not sure which journals you get, but, um, there are a lot to choose from and we need, we need to be, we don't, we're not gonna have a lot of money. So we need to be really surgical with it and really target, uh, which sectors and, uh, and which clusters here would benefit from what types of business? And then target getting to, getting to those sectors.
One of the articles of advertisement here is in Mississippi. And they were talking about waterfront, we need to have a repair. So you didn't need huge amounts of waterfront to repair yards and so on. And of course, the Gulf has a huge amount of barge and tow traffic. So as I look up and down the river, there are a whole lot of places where you don't need to tie up a super carrier. And the, uh, a lot of the marine industry around Portland City is being pushed out. So the hope is, we've got a pretty good hunk of waterfront here in Columbia County. To go at that industrially and getting people to it. But there doesn't seem to be a whole lot of easy way to get people to the river, just to get wet.
Well, it's, uh, you, you're right in terms of working waterfront because, um, they're not making any more of that.
Yep.
And, um, you know, a couple of thoughts. In terms, in terms of certain types of maritime activity, we're, we're not, we're not really positioned that well for barge assist and that sort of thing like Clas, Clasip is. So that's not what we ought to be chasing, chasing. But you've got a company like JT Marine that has an operation across the river that also just set up in the old Foss spot in, uh, in Rainier. So there's some of that stuff going on. I think the important thing, uh, here is to preserve the zoning and the permits uh, of our docks and our working, and our capability to have working waterfront. Because you're, you're not gonna get those again either. You need to make sure grandfathering people, uh, because to go out and actually get a permit to build a new dock, um...
God couldn't get here again, yeah, I know.
I mean, I, I was, I was involved in a Corps of Engineers project once and it took, I was, not for the whole time, but the, the last four years. It was a nineteen-year project and the Corps was celebrating because they got it done so quick. So I'm not interested in trying to permit a new site. I'm very interested in, and I've heard it a lot from John and a lot from Rachel, is with, with the focus on the industrial property. And I, and I constantly talk to the folks at, at Armstrong, is do not let that permit lapse. You have docks there. The question is, can you develop them and for what use will you develop them? Because those are, those are like gold, because you're not gonna be able to rebuild. But then the, the next question is, what, what type of thing do you want there? Do you want to attract maritime businesses there? Or do you want to have that maritime capability for businesses, you know, the option of barging? Next renewables, renewables, for example. They could reduce the number of rail cars if they had more capacity at the dock at Port Westward. To your point.
Our problem is we gotta get either four-thirty across that railroad or bring it up the river.
It's a whole lot cheaper to bring it up the river.
Yeah, it's one-thirtieth that of a truck.
Yep.
But the, the real question is, we gotta think major transportation system. Not just one or two blocks and a half a bridge.
Okay, Counselor Chilton is waiting.
I just wanted to jump in a little bit on, um, what Counselor Martin was saying. And it's hard for me, I love all the information on there, it's great information, I learned a lot. There's just a lot there, a lot of really good stuff. But I would like to see maybe it narrowed down to St. Helens and what, how, how, what are the benefits that, um, companies around town are seeing?
Okay. And one thing I would like to see, just on feedback and ideas, is that I've already reached out to commissioners and hopefully they'll take the lead on Sidney County dinners. But, uh, just to swap meetings, as far as elected officials being also involved, because I know you guys are, you know, city managers and, and Port and yourself are meeting regularly. I'd just like to see a, a, bring back kind of a swap meeting, going to just bring up on strength, weaknesses, whatever it's there for, yeah.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think we're, I think we're looking at doing another session, uh, around the roundtable stuff.
I think it'd be mildly important because it's been, you know...
Rachel's my touchstone on that and she, I know she mentioned it, but I don't think we'd schedule it, but yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to attend more of those.
And that's why, yeah, it, it's, it's pretty neat. We had at the Merriweather Center and it was a lot of elected officials helping you.
Yeah, it'll, you know, that was two years ago. A lot of, a lot of them had changed, so, yeah, big idea.
But what a, uh, great report, very full of stuff. See that, the report seems to be a little lackluster, so to speak, and, uh, you've done a wonderful job, Paul.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, you know, we've got a good team there, we've got a good, a good board and, uh, a good focus and a good place to work. And, uh, points well taken, we'll, uh, we'll get a little more narrowed in. Couple of my favorite, favorite projects I'm hoping will happen in the next couple of months or so. So I'd like nothing better than that, that success to bring back, so thank you.
All right, Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is, um, public safety facility utility fee discussion, Matt.
One second here.
Yep.
Um, Mayor, are you okay if I sit here or would you like me to sit in the middle?
You're probably sitting there.
What Matt's working at, that, uh, Paul was talking about the regional significant industrial area zoning is a economic development tool. And what that is, in case you didn't go into detail about the program, but it's a program where the city can actually recover its investment back. It, not property tax waivers is usually the tool that the state gives us, but it's actually income tax. So that those employees that meet their threshold, it gets that income back, taxed back from those who collect that and distributed to the city as long as it takes for the poor.
Really?
Different, interesting and very, uh, appreciated, a tool for economic development, so.
That's amazing, so we'd have like four different things, the Enterprise Zone, that's the whole new building?
All, all the others, all the others would apply.
Riverdale and this.
Yeah, it takes dollars, puts into infrastructure, we have the ability to capture that. At the beginning of the project, once we have the designation, then we're also looking at expanding more industrial, thinking the whole waterfront with Armstrong and the Port property and, you know, throw a pretty wide net there to, you know, this.
Infinitiates, yes.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay, Matt.
Ready?
Yep.
All right. So we're gonna talk about the public safety facility and some of the financing that goes behind it, so I have a few slides for you. Do not hesitate to interrupt me to ask any questions, um, of myself, uh, John or our police chief who is sitting patiently in the back there, so. I did wanna quickly go over the timeline, this is not a new slide for you, hopefully. Uh, it is something that is readily available to you as well. But just to go over, here we are at the August timeframe and looking to have a, hopefully a decision tonight on finalizing what amount of a monthly utility fee you would like to put on the resolution. That will come back to you according to the schedule at the second October meeting. And that resolution will go into effect in January of next year for the utility fee to start for the Public Safety Fund. We are just getting ready to close out the RFQ for the design bid services. That RFQ closes on Friday, so we should get bids, um, I'm expecting at least two, uh, two firms that I know of that I've spoken to, if not more, and then the rate committee will come back to the city council with a recommendation on who to move forward with to negotiate the contract for the design services, so.
Question on the bid process?
Yes.
Because of materials being so high?
Yes.
And they are going down quite drastically, especially the wood. And everything else went, followed wood up, so they're gonna be a little bit behind, but they're gonna go down as well. We're getting a bid right at, through those highs.
So we're not as, we're not necessarily getting a bid for the construction of the actual facility. This is more for the design and permitting.
Good.
And there will be a constructor along the process that will help with that pricing and kind of that process until we get to actual construction starting, uh, which is in January of twenty-two. So hopefully, in that timeframe, we'll be able to adjust prices from what we see in the market and hopefully over the year it starts to go down.
And I am listening, I'm just grabbing a cup of coffee right, right outside that door, so everybody knows.
So this is a slide that all of you probably remember from our community outreach events. These are the four options that we discussed with our community, showing the bond, general obligation bond, as well as the Public Safety Fund, the utility rate model. Um, overwhelmingly, everybody liked the Public Safety Fund over a thirty-year option. Um, so I want you, want you to keep in mind that estimated price that we showed up there of six to eleven dollars and fifty cents. After we made that choice to go with a thirty-year Public Safety Fund, staff, myself, John, Brian, we discussed a lot of options for dedicating some of our revenue to help mitigate some of the cost of the financing. So we came up with a number of items that we felt could be dedicated to help fund a public safety facility. Two of those top two items are the ACSP mortgage, uh, that is paid to the city on a monthly basis, as well as the ACSP, the public benefit payments that are made. And that says thirty-six thousand dollars plus because as ACSP continues to grow, how, how, based on how many buildings they have for production, that number increases by about twelve thousand dollars every building.
Can you remind me what ACSP is?
Uh, ACSP is the Orgro Tech Company, um, for the Marijuana Grow Facility and the CBD oils. We also have revenue sharing. Um, we've talked about the cannabis taxes and that number is highlighted blue because we will be discussing that briefly on the next slide to give you a little more detail. Right now, currently and in previous years, we've, the city has received roughly about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. Other revenue sharings that we are looking to dedicate are the state alcohol taxes, the cigarette taxes, as well as the system development charge administrative fees. Uh, so that is based simply on the development and SDCs that are paid by developers. Five percent of SDCs are administrative costs, which go back to the general fund. So we are hoping that you will, you are okay with dedicating those administrative costs back to, back out to the public safety facility. It's a way for development to kind of help indirectly pay for a public safety facility as the community grows. Some of the one-time funding that we've discussed with you, the sale of the Millard Road property, obviously that is ongoing right now. Uh, we discussed briefly about five hundred thousand dollars from that sale of the property. Obviously, it would sell for a lot more than that. It, it will be up to you as a council to decide how much of that sale you want to put towards the public safety facility. I've put in five hundred thousand dollars because I assume that the facility is gonna probably sell for two to three million dollars. If that changes, we can reevaluate, make the final decision as a council about which amount less or more that you wanna put towards that. In the financial projections, I have put in five hundred thousand dollars. Same for the current police station, that estimated value of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Obviously, we wouldn't sell the police station until the new station is built. Unless I wanna give an eviction notice, uh, but I don't, he might not mind, actually.
I think three hundred and fifty thousand might be just a little bit low.
It might be.
I don't think that's a great man cave.
Keep it, keep in mind...
Who's gonna buy it?
Yeah, from the finance...
That's about fifteen hundred a month, I think that's a great man cave, you got a big shop.
Are you Batman?
Yeah.
From the, uh, financial perspective, I try to keep things on the conservative line as opposed to being too aggressive and then have to come back and say, oops, sorry. So we currently have a few properties that are listed for sale right now. Um, I believe one of those is getting close to closing, um, John can talk about that later. But we have a couple other properties. Overall, those three properties are roughly about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, give or take. Uh, the city had originally talked about using the sale of those properties to help with the proceeds of the Public Safety Facility. Again, that is up to your choice when the time comes, when those funds come in, if you wanna dedicate those funds to the Public Safety Facility. Two unknowns are the grants and anything else that we can come up with in the next thirty years. Uh, so I am always open to different and new ideas and happy to report back to you when any of those ideas come up or if you think of something that you believe may help, please do not hesitate to let me know. So back last year in twenty-twenty, Oregon Measure One Ten passed. And many of you know that as the drug decriminalization, as well as the treatment initiative that was placed on and approved by about fifty-eight percent, so it passed with a pretty decent percentage. Um, it, within that measure, there were attributes of funding, the alcohol treatments and, uh, a lot of the other initiatives in that measure. And what you may or may not have known is that to fund those initiatives, the state has opted to grab more of the revenue sharing for the cannabis tax than what cities have previously received over the last several years. It is estimated that cities will lose roughly seventy percent of the cannabis tax that we receive now. There was an attempt for a Senate Bill Eight Sixty-four that would have allowed cities to either administratively or through a vote of the people of its community to increase the local sales tax for cannabis. That did not get all the way through the Senate floor. Um, it is possible that it will be picked up in the next session, which is in February of twenty-two. Hopefully it will, fingers crossed. Um, if you know anybody or have any contacts, please call and push for, for this. As you can see, it's gonna create a, a pretty decent impact on the utility fee that you have to decide on. So that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in cannabis, yes, Patrick?
Yeah, um, so what, uh, in Bill, Senate Bill Eight Sixty-four, what was the, um, how much potential rev, um, to what, what, what is the, the current tax? What could we add onto it as a local?
Three.
Currently, the tax is three percent. We would, the bill would have allowed us to approve up to ten percent. The idea was that it would make up the difference between the loss of the general revenue.
So that, saying, I'm half a gate for ten percent. But potentially, um, if this bill was passed in February and then if we decided to increase the tax, we could possibly make that, um, hundred and sixty K loss, we could make a wash.
Correct.
Possibly.
Well, that's, that's the hope.
Okay.
Yeah, state revenues, this, you know, each legislative session, there's always, they wanna, you know, have a thumb on the scale and lay more money towards the, uh, state's funds and then take away from cities, but Cleveland Cities does an exceptional job of protecting us and this is just one of those cases where they just didn't have enough time to complete it done. And, uh, there was, you know, administratively approved option, there's the, this legislature, we could have a local vote. If I recall back, when I first legalized cannabis, we, it passed overwhelmingly, we, we took a pause and they, in order to get the additional three percent going from seventeen to twenty, we could get, it had to be voter approved and I think that approved by a margin of close to seventy percent with, uh, which is pretty, pretty accepting.
Yeah, sorry, and just one last thing. If we went to ten, the, the state is just, they're able to just grab from that three percent, they wouldn't be able to touch our additional.
Correct.
That would be ours state.
That's, that's my understanding as of today.
Okay, that's what we, that's what we would hope for, yes.
Yep, okay, maybe a couple of years and no change.
So, as I mentioned, that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, assuming a seventy percent loss of revenue would go down to seventy thousand dollars that the city would receive. Put that in a very local perspective, as I wrote here, that hundred and sixty thousand dollars, even if it was a flat amount for the next thirty years, um, that's potentially almost close to five million dollars. So now the fun part. Initially, when I came to you several months ago and talked about what rate of a utility fee we could afford to do, we spoke about two dollars per month. That was assuming the two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. When I remove that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars or the hundred and sixty or so, it changes things somewhat. I would say not drastically, but, um, I wanted to give you these opportunities to see what amounts there are. And I've kept it in fifty cent intervals just to keep it simple. The two dollars, if we were to do that, pays the debt service only through twenty thirty-three. So that means you would have to come up with money from twenty thirty-four to twenty fifty-two, when the bond is scheduled to be paid off. So we're short. You continue to be short until we reach the amount of three dollars. So three dollars is what I feel is the bare minimum with the numbers and information that I have right now that the city could fund the remainder of the Public Safety Facility in addition to all the dedicated revenue that we are looking at right now. At three dollars, I estimate that we will be able to pay off the twenty fifty-two loan, bond by January of twenty fifty. So even a couple of years before the bond is finalized.
Well, essentially, the city would find over half the funding in elsewhere because, you know, this will, you know, be six dollars a month. If it was nothing up there trying to pay for anything, you know, like seven bucks.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. If you were not gonna dedicate any revenue, um, it would likely probably be around seven to eight dollars.
Yeah, correct.
But because you're dedicating many of the revenues that we talked about earlier, we only have to fund through the utility portion a smaller amount. So a couple of things to keep in mind when you think about these. Obviously, there's gonna be a lot of development and growth in our community over the next thirty years. We're obviously are seeing that right now. Obviously, buildings, development goes in waves, so we're on a high right now. Eventually, we will drop back down and come back up. So over the thirty years, there's gonna be a lot of changes. Changes in development as far as customers will make a big impact on what rates people will pay. So if we have a huge development coming in, like we know of, apartment complex or a hundred and fifty housing development, obviously that makes a difference in what people pay. All these options that you see between the three and six dollars are still well below what we have communicated with the community. The question that you have now is, do you want to pay more now? Would you pay four dollars or five dollars? Or do you pay three dollars? As you can see, if you pay five dollars, you could potentially pay it off in December of twenty forty-four. Versus having three dollars and you pay it off by twenty fifty. A couple of things to keep in mind as well is that the two-dollar recreation fee that is currently on the in-city customers will be going away in January. So the community right now is already used to paying that two dollars every single month on their utility bill. So setting a rate at three dollars is only increasing that a dollar more. Setting that rate at six dollars is, is only increasing at four dollars compared to what people have been paying over the last couple of years. I also want you to keep in mind that sometimes when we go to the well for money and we take a little bit too much off the top at first, it kind of dries up very quickly. And I do see other departments coming to the council potentially in the future and asking for assistance. That may be Parks and Recreation for projects, that may be the library for additional staff, that might be your own police force asking for additional officers. And so I, when you think about what amount you are going to choose, I want you to keep in mind that if you select eight dollars, you're setting the bar there and then we have a department coming in and say, oh, I'd like to do a dollar so that I can afford to do this. Well, going from eight to nine dollars may not be swallowable, so to speak, for yourselves and the community. Whereas if you do choose a lower amount, like three dollars, there might be a little more left in the well if in the future you as a council decide to do that. So what I am hoping for tonight during the work session items is for a decision on what amount that staff should come back to you with a resolution in October to pass. So I'm looking for direction from the city council on what amount you would like to see.
Matt, uh, a, a thought, Patrick. Let's set that rate at eight dollars. And that is the maximum we will collect forever. So we're gonna use three of that eight dollars for the, uh, safety building. But we've told the community, nowhere is ever are we going more than eight dollars. But we've told the community, nowhere is ever are we going more than eight dollars. That's our top ceiling. That's our advertisement for this building, we're going three dollars. If other people come in, we still have some diggle room between the three and the eight. How does that play?
You can put language into the resolution that states that you will not go over a certain dollar amount. You can put language into the resolution that restricts what those funds can be used for. So what you're saying can be done through the resolution language.
Even though we may not use it, we've got those words in it, that's, okay, we can do that.
Correct. That's my understanding, unless John thinks otherwise, or the attorneys on the line.
Okay, that, that's, that's, that's what I'm asking.
He is on the line, he's behind the, yeah. Okay, this might be pretty unpopular with the, with the rest of the council, but I'd like to see the money stay at two dollars, just to keep it there, possibly revisit this in two thirty-three, because there's a reason for that. I see the city growing, and I see, and you said it, it kinda leaves them, but this, this city is going to proliferate unbelievably. So I'm kind of like, like to see it conservative now, especially for our individuals who are hard-pressed at this time. And I don't think ten years from now, people will be hard-pressed unless pandemics all over the world take it for the worst, and you, and I kinda see the, I kinda see the glass half-full more than happened. So if the economy is going to proliferate and help grow stronger, I don't see why we can't be right at that two-dollar level and, and revisit it in twenty thirty-three. I think that the citizens, that would be more tolerable for all of our citizens at this point, and as new peoples come into the community and they see that facility, I, they will without a doubt support it. Right now, it's, it's questions of looking in the newspaper going, you know, what is this and what's going on? The marketing has been wonderful, but it's still marketing. Once a building gets up and once there's, shows a need to continue, I don't see any, any problems with that. So I'm coming in at a pretty low rate, and I would like to see that happen. If the council, if the council deliberates on that, that's the starting point.
Wait until.
Okay? That's my way in.
For, for.
Can I, can I? Yeah.
Yeah, if I can just add to that, that is definitely doable, if that is a choice of the city council to do.
Council could have a vote next.
Can do two dollars. My main recommendation would be for, in the resolution that is passed, is that we set up a renewable timeframe, and I suggested three years, where either myself or somebody review the financials of the utility customers, the dedicated revenue, the forecasts. In every three years, the city council, we would come back to you with any possible rate adjustments that may be needed over time. So you could very well do something like two dollars for the first few years, see how things go economically, and make a decision at three years intervals of what adjustments may be needed, if any.
Yeah, that might be, to me, for our citizens, more digestible. It just seems that way. It's like the big bulk at one time, you get some pushback, but I just, I, I kinda like the, the whole issue of easing into this. I'm done.
So I'd like to see the three dollar because of the fact that what we see statistically is that we will be, have shortfall at two dollars. No matter what we put at it, if we get a thousand more residents, maybe two thousand more residents in five years from now, and our county water bills, maybe, maybe. But we're gonna be not fiscally responsible, and you weren't, this, people are watching, that your job is to educate us, not to try to entice us or anything else. Matt's job is to educate us on the budget, that's his entire job, financial director. He's not, he's letting us, giving us options, he's leading us, he does sound like he's leading us, and he's leading us in the direction of being fiscally responsible. That's his job. So I would like to see a three dollar, who is it?
Show market?
Your car warranty is expired.
I would personally like to see a three dollar with, in the resolution, can only be bumped up to fifty cents through a resolution process and, and no, at least three years down the road. Where the resolution could be passed because we're not always gonna be sent here, and if we don't allow that city council at that point in time to be able to adjust that fifty cents, we are not doing them any justice, and we are not looking towards the future far enough to give them a little bit of leniency to make a decision down the road to adjust it fifty cents, which is not a whole bunch. We, we know that's probably about fifty thousand dollars, okay, in a year's time, right now at current rates. Okay, that's what we're talking about, letting them adjust it. Because it's a dollar, it was a hundred and ninety-one at two dollars, right? For the rent center.
Yeah.
So that's what we are literally allowing a future city council, now we got two and a half, four years, and I told you that's what I'm doing, you know?
So, Mayor, as we progress, I got a question on this, if I, I'm not interrupting. Okay, the gross income for individuals is going to increase and increase and increase as time goes on. And setting a fifty cent limit might be something that might be too confining, but as gross incomes rise, then this two dollars, this, or your three dollar thing could rise according to the gross annual income index, how that goes. I, I just see that fifty cents might be too stringent as a, as a policy. I would like to say, I, I would like to, I like your idea.
Well, because of, because it'd be a pass with an ordinance, and the way we're going about it, it can only read, and we could write, we could write three dollars to eight dollars, but what's that gonna say to anybody? That's gonna say, oh, well, how long till you're gonna be up to eight dollars? You see what I'm saying? And I, I see where you're going with this, that you wanna keep it down to the two dollars. Is why I would say three dollars with only fifty cents increment, just to make sure that, we're just trying to play for the police station, that's it.
And there's nothing wrong with that, if I can just add one little piece to the discussion, that typically with resolutions, we try to keep them as open-ended as possible to give the council opportunity if maneuvers are needed. So if you are restricted to fifty cents, there may be something that we haven't predicted or something that happens that says, oh, well, we can only change it fifty cents, so we're stuck. So if, I think it, it's correct to say in the resolution that it can only be passed by another resolution, but I, I would just recommend that you not restrict or put a dollar limit on what those changes mean, because we don't know what will happen in the future.
But it's almost like our tax measure got at a certain level, it can never go up. That's what, that's, I think, I would like to see flexibility in this with future councils saying, oh my gosh, we need to do this, and, or whatever. And if the economy does this, I think that councils need the flexibility to do the same kind of thing. So that's, that's my, that's my, that's my point, it coincides with what you just said.
They got an abundance of money, they could through the water part of it.
Exactly.
They could, they could adjust it through that.
I can't be.
No, Councilor Tilt.
I started.
Yeah, actually, did Councilor, sort of, did have one.
I'm gonna follow up with Doug's, at the two dollars. Right now, in this area, St. Helens has more poverty than the rest of the county on a per capita basis. And starting off low, because we have people who are hurting now, it doesn't sound like much, but it's a whole area, we're not doing real well. So let's keep that in mind and get, as we start now, we're not that well off personally as we look at our whole population. So I think the only way we're gonna be able to do is to start low, how low, that's another discussion, and have a mechanism to ramp up, but right now, our area is hurting. That's just the way it is, go to the food bank and see.
No, I'm just, I just know it's fiscally responsible, I'm reading the Turk.
Yeah, I know, no, but as I say, that's kinda the playground we're in.
Numbers don't lie, that's what I do know about a county.
My question, kind of feeds into that, which is that in the very beginning, we talked about putting more resources into Community Action Team for people that couldn't pay the electric bill. So where are we at with that?
So I was actually just about to say that, say that point, that from the advisory board that sat through many mediums and came to you with recommendations, one of those recommendations was to increase the funding that we currently give to Community Action Team. Right now, that is, I think, two years ago, we gave them about fifteen thousand dollars from the late fees that we collect on utility bills. As I said on the cap board, I ask them almost every month, hey, do you need more money? How's things going? Just because we gave them fifteen, not kinda knowing how it was gonna be used and everything. From my understanding of the Community Action Team, is that they still have not used all of those funds, and they are readily available. So with that said, we still can give them additional funds specifically for people that may need assistance or can't afford this two dollars or three dollars or whatever amount it is, that Community Action Team already has those requirements, the forms, and all the necessary processes to go through if somebody is truly in need and needs assistance. So we would still be increasing those funds like was advised from the board.
And is that projected in any of your numbers? Are you just leaving it what it is?
No, that is not. It is just based on people paying utility bills.
So I'm wondering about, you know, like, a fee based off of how much we would want to contribute into that for people that actually do need the help, but I, I know there's lots of people that can afford a three dollar, five dollar, you know, extra rate on their bill also, so it's finding a middle ground there, but also being able to help the people that can't.
Yeah, I just know, like you're saying, there are people that can afford. I just know that us as a city council, for me personally, when I'm looking at making a, buy a new car, I look at the bills, what I have, crunching numbers, okay, I gotta, this is gonna be the payment on it, this is gonna be the insurance increase, we're barely gonna make it, we can't do it, can't do it. There's no barely making it. That's just not fiscally responsible. Oh, it looks like we got a couple hundred extra, extra, we can do it. That's what I'm looking at when I see that. I don't know, great, great presentation, that's what I heard, three dollars, twenty-two, barely, barely made it. Correct, go back to there? Twenty-fifty, three dollars, good only through twenty forty-one, we're, we're short on two fifty, two dollars and fifty cents. And that's every bit of money we have. That's right. I don't think three dollars, a dollar more is, is that much of a push to ask for the community for a new police station.
Especially knowing that we told them six to block off.
Yes.
So, I mean, they're not, they're gonna be happy about that, I think.
Council Berkeley.
Yeah, just, um, so the repayment, new repayment, is that based on the seventy thousand or the two hundred and thirty thousand from?
This new repayment that you're looking at right now is based on the seventy thousand.
Seventy, okay. And, I mean, we talk about, we, we talk about leaving the option open for increasing, but we can also leave the option open so it could decrease. And all this, again, depends, as we get more houses, apartments, more rate payers, even at two dollars, does that, would that have an impact? Okay, so let's, the two dollars per month, go only through twenty thirty-three, that's at current, current.
That is assuming a very slow growth in our EDUs.
So, okay, so you are, you are accounting.
There is, there is a growth estimate already currently built into the forecasting model, it is one point five percent. And if you were to look at the last couple of years, you would see seventeen percent, twelve percent.
Sure.
Which is because of the amount of development we've seen.
Right.
And, okay. And keep in mind, it's businesses as well. So it's not just residential's that will be paying this, it will be the industrial park that we develop and those businesses that come in, businesses and new residential on the waterfront.
Sure, okay. So then, I, I do hear Councilor Topaz's concern, and perhaps Councilman Morton's as well, about the inflationary concerns. Right now, a lot of people are, you know, hearing about inflation, costs going up, et cetera, things like that, and so that if we were to, I, I just know that's on people's minds, and we talk about that, and whether people can afford that or, or not. I do think I recall in some of the public comments, several months ago, when we were first looking at some of the original presentations, some of the public comments were, yep, you, 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 where, where is it gonna, where are you gonna stop? We said, we say a fee, and then, oh, the council can just keep putting it, you know, putting it up, putting it, putting it up, and I, I hear that concern. So trying to take all this into account, I love the simplicity of the two dollars. But I also would rather, I think in one way, set a fee that might be higher with the possibility of it than going down, let's say, the three dollar, the three.
So this is originally what we were campaigning.
Yes, yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm, yes, oh, Mayor, I'm, I'm, I'm fully.
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to be part of the discussion here.
Right, no, fully, fully aware of that.
Which is a big, big span, six to eleven.
And, and I'm just trying to say the, what I, what I have been hearing and, and what I've been, been thinking. So that I'm thinking that I would, might be more, in the short term, getting heat for going higher with the possibility of maybe going down rather than going with the lower amount and then facing, well, that might be a new council then, you know, going up to fifty cents or, or whatever. I could, anyway, I believe I could support a three dollar per month, but being very careful, as, as Matt was saying, in the crafting of the, the resolution to buy flexibility, and I'd rather maybe go with the higher than the, the lower. Higher now with the, the possibility that other, we, we could, could bring.
Higher meaning three dollars?
Higher going three dollars with.
Lower meaning two?
Lower meaning.
Thank you. No, I would, I wouldn't understand what you were saying, not you.
Well, okay, I'm sorry, I mean, all the talk has been three and two, and I guess it could, whether I said ten dollars or one dollar, higher or lower, I'd rather, so three dollars, two dollars. Three dollars, I could support, rather than the two, I could support the, I, but right now, I'm thinking I would rather do three with the possibility, and three dollars is kinda where I'm.
Okay, so I think I, I think what I hear here is a census of three dollars, because the, the, these three over here, draw it up, bring it back to us at a later date, okay? And I'm not trying to cut this short, but we do have our break time, but I also have staff here that I do wanna do, go ahead and do our.
Can I, can I ask one question when you get done?
Is the revolver on this?
It revolves on.
No, go ahead, ask it, go fast, because we're, we're kind of pressed for time.
We're expecting this town to grow. Let's go with three dollars a minute, or three dollars a month, and let's say we grow at such a rate that we are gonna pay this off five years early. What kind of growth do we need with a three dollar rate to pay this bond off early?
The amount of growth would depend on when you wanna pay it off.
No, uh, we're, we're planning on three dollars, it's gonna get paid off in twenty fifty.
In twenty fifty, okay.
But somehow the town grows really fast, and we pay it off in two thousand forty, what kind of growth would that be?
I would have to go back to my financial modeling and play around with the EDU percentage.
The, the, the question really is, if we really expect to grow fast, how fast do we have to grow for this new magic number? Is it, well, you need seven thousand people a year, or is it another thousand people, is it a realistic number you need to pay it off fast or not?
Well, this is moderate growth, right?
No, I, I, I know, I'm, I'm, I wanna, I wanna have a super growth and cut that.
Yeah, I would say this model assumes a very conservative growth.
That's right, I wanna, I wanna gas up, what, how much gas up would I need to cut that down?
If you're talking population growth, there's other, there's the other business side of the growth.
Well, that, that's true.
It's a big piece of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you were to have a business customer and.
You could do, okay, one business customer, the right business could cut this down, correct?
Yeah, if you were to have another Walmart, let's say, um, you know, since this model and the fee is based on dwelling, equivalent dwelling units, having a larger business come in could drastically impact.
And I'd like to state that we will see all this in our, in our financial records, in our budgeting as, as future budgets come. There are city Walmarts, we're gonna see that.
Got an industrial car.
Do you have one comment?
Yeah, and I, I, I support the three dollars, and the reason I support the three dollars, if we do a marketing analytic, uh, uh, program to let our citizens know that this is only going to be a dollar more than what they're paying at this point. I think that's very tolerable for, uh, individuals at this point, keep our cap program going. But I'd like to see that marketed as it's going to be only a dollar more compared to the eleven.
Yeah, very, very strategically, we placed on the timeline that I just put up, the fee for the resolution would come to you in October. That is so that we have November and December to market to our community, what the fee is, how much it's going to be, why it is the dollar amount, and that it begins in January.
Okay, and I'm gonna give final word to our city administrator.
That's the real point. Perspective here, where the reason we're having this conversation in, in large part is because of the state's grab on the state revenue sharing funds. And if they give us those tools back in a future legislative session, that is either gonna positively affect the, the payoff amount, or the ability to change or reduce the fee.
Yeah, sure.
Fifty hundred and sixty thousand dollars difference.
Right.
Yes. Okay, uh, and before we take our break, and we're gonna go ahead and do a debrief on Citizens Day, 'cause we got Lisa and Sean here, and then we'll take a pivotal break after that.
Nope, I forgot, I forgot, no, I, no, no.
All right.
There you are.
Hey, everyone.
Lisa Shaw, deputy city recorder.
Yes.
Anna Duggan, St. Helens Parks and Recreation Manager.
So Citizens Day was great this year, all of you helped a lot, um, we had a lot of staff, especially parks and public works, they were a huge help. We served about four hundred and fifty meals, which wasn't quite as much as we expected, but still, that's great, people really seemed to appreciate it. Vendors, we opened it up to vendors this year, and in the past, it's been more sponsors we had it for, and about seventeen people came, which is really good.
Yeah, it was good, I, I agree.
It was, yeah, they did a lot of giveaways and a lot of information, Nomi said they made some really good connections, which was good to hear. Highway thirty cruisers, they organized the whole car show, we didn't really do much, Shawna kind of told them where to go, and, but that was nice, just having them take over, they were big.
Big, 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 big difference, trying to get all that, have your gal do the plaques and everything, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, they coordinated that, and then they went to, uh, businesses and got sponsors for the trophy, which is good. Um, what else did we have? Is that all I have, it was just fun, every lunch, and people were really appreciative, it was good.
Did they feel positive that the car, that, uh, the car show, did they feel positive about being there and about their, uh, ability to show off their cars? Did, did they go away with a good feeling?
Yeah, I think so, I heard, I received a email from Rob.
Yep.
Yeah, um, they had a good time, they were looking for a little more space, so I don't know if we can think about that in the future. If it doesn't happen to be a car show weekend, we may need to think of a little more room for them to expand.
Big park.
Yeah, I didn't go down there, so I don't know how many cars were down the dip.
That was pretty cool.
There might have been more room for more cars, yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely a little bit more room for more cars, they asked that we kind of meet with them and, um, so we can, they can pick a date when there's maybe not car shows going on too, and, uh, you know, I'm not opposed to that. When we get closer to looking at that, we would, let you girls work on that, Shawna, you were a huge part, your rec crew was fabulous. You went out and give a report on how they did.
So basically, the same as Lisa, I heard a lot of great feedback, the only kind of opportunities that I see for next year is picking a date way earlier. And so that's why my part in this kind of is an ask that we start looking at that, and maybe have something set in stone by the end of September, which seems early. But that way, we can let all of our partners know, because they're already planning their calendars for next summer, and summertime can be hard. Um, so Kathy, uh, Crystal, Lisa, Dave and I, and Erin all sat down and talked about what we thought opportunities were and, and, and dates for the future, we really liked the date of June twenty-fifth next year, um, and we looked at other calendars, and it's not uh, on same dates that other things are going on.
Was there parade going on that date?
Um, so the parade would be the weekend before.
Okay.
And so that's the ask for the date, we think weather wise, it's always better in June, it seems like for us, I mean, it worked out good this time, but if it was a week later or something, it could have been a lot different. I know it, I know it rains sometimes, but for me, I'd rather it rain than be in a hundred and ten degree weather. And, uh, yeah, so that was our big ask for that, and that was something from the volunteers, that they would really love to come back, and our booths come back next year. Um, but they would like to know a date ahead of time, so that they're not already booked doing something else, 'cause it was the same weekend as the Vernonia, um.
Jamboree.
Jamboree, which is an amazing event out there, and I know not everyone can make everything, and sometimes we can't avoid having it on the same weekends. But if we can be a little bit more thoughtful with what other community events are going on, um, and Elisa and I would love to work together hopefully next year, I may put words in your mouth, but to kind of get it going, so, and having different people in charge of different areas. So if they have questions and stuff, 'cause I know there was times where I had like steam coming out of my ears, 'cause I wasn't sure what, Rick was trying to call me, and I was like running around, I'm like, I really, I really don't know what's going on. Well, I've been to him, and I have helped him many times, but there was a lot more vendors that had questions and stuff too, so, yeah.
I like that date, because it's a, a precursor to the, the, the kids getting out of school and, uh, opening up summer. Uh, it seems to be kind of a time for a lot of people out celebrating, and, uh, I like that.
I think so too, and that way we can advertise our upcoming things that we have for Parks and Rec or for the city, and, yeah, so, you know, maybe just think about it and let us know for sure if that's a date that works for everyone, 'cause we will have some additional asks as time goes on, but right now, that's our initial one for.
Anybody got any issues with that date?
Where are we?
Let's go with it.
All right.
I like that, no, can I, I'm pretty, Councilman Morton, you're, yeah, that is just a great segue, end of school year, pre-Fourth of July.
Well, allows you to also promote what the summer program for, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Kids come, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 and next year, we'd like to bring, you know, some more city vehicles out, maybe do like a special truck type thing.
Bring the old truck, bring the old truck.
That sort of thing, I think this year, there was a little, some folks were on vacation and stuff, so having some more staff involvement will be something that we would like to ask for, so.
Want to mention that about having booths for different departments?
Yeah.
Having what?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so I've been looking at how other cities position themselves on days like this, and one of the things that I've seen that I really liked is called City Days. And it's, what it is, is, and we can keep the name Citizens Day in the park, but this model is different booths that are set up for different upcoming projects that are going on.
Yes.
Or just different booths for our different departments, so they can come up and meet the person who's behind the water bill, phone calls, or the business licensing, that sort of thing, and get a name or the face, and ask them questions, and kind of get that community engagement. So that's something that we'd really like to incorporate for next year as well.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, get to know your city center.
I, uh, I, yeah, I will refrain from using certain terminology, but it would be a great opportunity, like for the water filtration plant, you know, that pull up their little model of
Yeah.
how that goes through and things like that.
I don't think, you are a good, and I.
No, I said the water filtration plant, I'm not saying, no, that's
I know what you meant. Yes.
where we get the water and purify it to drink.
Yeah, and I think that's great.
Uh, so, uh, no, and I, but I was just impressed, uh, by the, the, the turnout from, from, uh, the police, um, our public works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just everybody, it was, it was, it was.
There was one mistake that I made, as I positioned somebody over with police and fire that I thought was the National Guard group.
Yeah, it was.
And it, and it wasn't, and so he asked me, how come I'm over here all by myself, and I was like, oh, you're so, and so I was like, no. So I got him moved to where he should go, 'cause the National Guard had to come a little later, because they were in the parade over it. So if you hear about that, that was my, my positioning at most.
I'd just like to give a historical perspective, and Kathy Payne sure could, uh, relate to this, but if we did this fifteen years ago, where would it be? It would be in a mud hole over at McCormick Park. And, uh, now we have a parking lot.
Yes.
Got two restrooms, we have a big plaza on one side, we have a playground on another, this city is rocking in terms of growing. I, I just, I just, uh, when I looked at that, I just kind of thought back, or when I was there, I was thinking back of, uh, my first years on the council. Actually, where would a Citizens Day in the park be? And the only place it could have been would probably be down on Columbia View Park, uh, and that, that would be it. Or a school ground somewhere, or a fairground, and, but now, we have that, and it's so centralized, and it's so beautifully utilized. You guys just did a, a, a great job, and, and I, and I like this debriefing, because it's going to be even better next year and the year after.
Maybe we could do some historical stuff with like then and now too, because some of the stuff at the parks meeting, I'm like, whoa, I had no idea, like all this fa- really fascinating stuff. And some of the stuff you've heard about McCormick Park, so I've been geeking out about all the parks and history, so I've been working with Brandon and Leland and.
Well, nineteen eighty, nineteen thirteen, eighteen, nineteen eighty-one, Jim Davis and three other folks, you know, guys got in there, and they started carving out that park.
I wanna find the wooden pool out there.
Yeah.
They literally did it.
And it's so nice to have that history, and I think it just puts that community pride in there as well, to see. I showed Jessica where the Japanese gardens were there and stuff.
She's like, there's a wooden pool out there, and I'm like, oh, I'm determined to find it.
So yeah, just bringing that pridefulness, and I think it was, you all did a fantastic job, I think getting you away from the grill a little bit more, so people can talk to you. I know you all love to do that, but, um, yeah, just having that planned a little better, so you all feel like you can go out.
Well, Mayor, it's a bit towards the other reporters, you have photo op, I'm like.
I know, I heard you were on the front page of the newspaper today, my coworker's like, oh, I see you on the front page with the mayor, I was like, oh, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, uh, let's meet in about, uh, not quite six months prior to, just to kind of touch base and see where we're going, okay?
Yeah. Lisa and I'll meet next week, but we'll.
So you guys were all hardworking.
No, it was, it was true.
Yeah, it was great, yes, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mayor.
One thing about this meeting at the park, it was very relaxed, people were happy. Last couple of years, there's been a tension, there was no tension, people were generally relaxed and enjoying themselves, and was noticeable. Whether they got the right things or not, watching people come through the line and all, there wasn't the tension, and the kids seemed to be enjoying, and you didn't see parents, you know, freaking out because the kid's over there by eight feet away.
Yeah.
And that was very impressive to see that happen.
Councilor Topaz, I noticed that you, you can't, you've served everybody that came through that line.
That's right.
Yep, so I was, I was pretty impressed.
I like starving people.
It was, it was pretty impressive. All right, so let's go ahead and take a break, and we'll re-adjourn here at, uh, three twenty, three thirty-four.
Yeah, right, correct.
All right.
Anderson?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you really using it for this?
Yeah.
I mean, if, if, if we were just gonna put houses on it, they can do that.
Yep.
Right. No, no, right, 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 right.
Well, it really benefits the school district too, because, you know, a lot of these, there's a lot of potential there for.
Yeah, and, and on the diagram that we're gonna look like, look at on Friday, we still keep the golf team there.
Oh, really?
So, the idea is we'll do a few holes of golf kind of around things, so people can still.
So, I can go golf and play softball? So exciting.
See, that's the thing. You build a softball complex. Every time I read those things.
We're gonna build a concession stand.
I'll trade it with money.
Pay for it all.
Okay, so let's go ahead and go to our next item on our agenda. Welcome back for a recess, uh, which is strategic action plan updates.
So, I'm not gonna take too terribly long, but I did want to quickly show you an update. So, we have our main five goals. I wanted just to quickly go through these, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Uh, but I wanted to give you an update on all of these strategic action plan items that we had. So, in goal number one, we had nine things to complete. Uh, we are on track to do all of them except one, which is the media training for council and commissioners. We would really like to do that in person. Uh, it's something that just doesn't equate well over Zoom. Uh, and so, once we can get back to in-person meetings and then also find a trainer for that, Rachel's working on that. Uh, we will get that scheduled for yourselves and the commissioner members. So, uh, we're likely gonna have to push that item to the next strategic plan. Goal number two had three items. Um, we completed two of those. The first one, create a strategic communications plan. Covid kind of put the crux on that. Uh, with Crystal working remotely as well as taking on a lot of additional communication things. So, that will be an item that we push to the next strategic plan. Um, livable and safe community. We had a number of events. I'm still waiting for a couple departments to get back to me on where their updates are, but uh, a good majority, we have completed, uh, as you can see in the, uh, column here. Uh, the only item that we did kind of pull a halt on was the Godfrey Park improvements. We did do a master plan kind of idea and project to that. We heard some mixed feedback from council as well as uh, some of the community about what was going to go in that. And so, we decided to, let's put a halt on it, and let's wait till we update the master plan. And that will involve our community about what amenities they want in the park, uh, what items they want to see in the parks. So, hopefully, we can either ascertain whether what we planned was gonna be good, and we'll continue moving forward, or if there's any changes that need to happen. On goal number four, we had thirteen items. Uh, most of those have been completed. A couple items that will likely not be is, uh, what's often referred to as Jacob's Bluff. Uh, so that's the property on Tenth and Eleventh, in that bluff area. Um, it's just a matter of timing with everything going on in the community and Jacob and Jenny not having the time to really go through and actually go through that exercise. So, um, I don't anticipate that that will be done by the end of the strategic plan. And then also the central waterfront development plan. Obviously, we are, uh, moving forward on some more construction plans for the industrial business park. We already have plans in place for the waterfront that we're moving forward on, so those plans are in place. Uh, so I did mark those as complete, cause we do have a plan and we are starting to move on it. The central waterfront still has a lot of studying, a lot of discussions that I'm sure John can go into more detail about. Um, but we need funding to get to that certain point. So, until funding becomes available, um, we'll continue to move that on to the next strategic plan.
I'm just curious, would, uh, would, uh, would, what we're trying to do there, would that meet some of the infrastructure federal money, the central waterfront?
We are, yeah, we are pursuing funding for those.
Yes.
To the next increment. To say it's completed or not completed is kind of a, you know, it's such a big project.
I, I went back and forth on like the industrial park and the waterfront, because there's fifty things within that project that have to be done.
Sure.
But to the point to say that we have a plan, we have a framework idea, and now we're moving on construction, I think felt to me that, yes, we have a plan. It may not be fully executed one hundred percent. The waterfront isn't gonna be done for many years.
Yeah.
But we have a plan and we're starting to move forward.
One thing we all agree on, it's a thirty-nine acre swimming pond. It's just a little too big.
It's a little bit. Uh, and then the last goal, goal five of long-term planning, um, a lot of master plans are getting started or being, uh, right about to be finished. Uh, we have the public safety plan. We have that moving forward, obviously, the IT infrastructure upgrades, and then a few items that we're building and planning that uh, I just haven't heard back from those departments. And I just asked them this morning, so wasn't expecting for everybody to get back, but happy to answer any questions or anything that either I or John can answer.
If you could back up to, uh, goal three, or, yeah, number nine, the, I'm sorry, it's goal four.
Oh, goal four.
The, uh, Great Lakes Park improvements out there. So, Matt, we've, we've had a conversation here with the Marine Board just last week about the, on their dime, planning a media accessible dock improvement there. The dock would go out at a grade that would be accessible and serve both the non-motorized boating facility and a fishing dock. Perhaps one on each side, or, uh, maybe uses on both sides, which is pretty exciting. Cities maintain a lease there for maybe commercial mortgage share for eighty years. And, uh, you know, if you look at the existing infrastructure that's out there, there's some pilings, there's some dolphins, and if you have a visual online that you can look at on Google Earth, just can see what that might look like, but they're gonna be working out on that in the coming months here.
What was fascinating about that little meeting, cause I just happened to pop in his office, is that it actually does line up pretty good, because if you're in too shallow, there's you could actually endanger some fish. It has to be up to a certain depth in order to meet requirements, which was fascinating to me.
What, what kind of fish can you catch in that area? Anything?
Perch and catfish. Oh, out there where the dock would be, yeah, you could catch steelhead, salmon.
Okay, so, so these real fishes could be.
Yeah, real fish, yeah.
So, uh, I'll continue to keep you updated, but just wanted to give you a more thorough update than I have previously, and, um, wanna thank all of you, cause many of these projects were from your lists as well as staff, so, uh, with your guidance, that's what helped build this list, and so we can continue moving forward. On that note, start to keep a track if there are new items that you want on the next strategic plan. That is gonna be right around the corner, December, January timeframe, when Rachel and I get together and start meeting with you to create the new strategic plan for the next couple of years. So, if you have items that you want to see on that list, make sure you jot them right via note or Rachel, and we can make sure to hit your market for discussion later. Um, but just thank you very much, and we'll see you in December.
Yep.
Do you need to send a? A copy of that?
Yes, I can send this out to you. I, if you're okay, I'd like to wait till staff can fill in the holes.
Sure.
And then I'll send it out to you.
And I.
And this information or other list of projects are on our website. So, under Business and Development, Strategic Work Plan, any of the community members can go down here and look at each specific one. Uh, the ones that are not completed have a link to a PDF file that explains what the project is, what it is, how long it's gonna take, what it's gonna cost, all that information.
Kudos to John for taking the bull by the horn. I was trying to envision something more, which would be more target, uh, oriented for staff members to grab a hold of, but I know that in the staffing meetings, they, they review this and, um, but often they, and check some things off the list, obviously, so.
Nice to be in.
Yep, yep.
That was a good decision, I think. Well, when did you, I mean, uh, how many years, a couple of years ago, do you, well, was it just a year ago or a little bit more?
About two.
When you decide, yeah, to really keep this, I think that's been a really, a, a good thing. Thanks for.
Okay, Matt, thank you. All right, now we'll go to our city ministry report. Tom Walsh.
Well, very close was on my report. It's something to talk about, so I'll, I'll not talk about that. So, the last few meetings are kind of, some of the headline issues here are enforcement of the city docks and, um, enforcement of Sand Island and, and tours. I think that would be the top, top tier, um, things we've been doing, and it's unfortunate that he had to roll out, cause he's been doing a, a whole lot of work, kind of working on that. And others, mayor's been working with the sheriff's office. We've been engaged with the Marine Board, the DSL, uh, our local courts, you know, finding better tools to enforce our docks. And it's, you know, really challenging, some of the training requirements and things we're learning to, uh, try to find workarounds to be able to have tools to be able to enforce our docks. And, um, so, you know, we had talked about a kiosk. We've talked about, um, the Marine Board's thrown some things out there. For, for instance, as a condition of our department's date lands lease, that we lease that area from the, from the state, that any boat that comes to the docks is required to be registered. So, that, right there, enough to trespass them from our docks. You cannot be here if your boat is not registered. And, and many of them are not. So, the, the how, you know, the enforcement tools with the officers that need the training to be able to even step on the docks, according to our, and our insurance company is another player, and they'll, it's a they, they don't want our officers even, you know, stepping on the dock unless they had this.
Yeah.
Training. So, it's hard to enforce when you can't get close to your subjects there. But, uh, another thing the Marine Board brought up was this change in their philosophy of use the fee you can charge for someone to use the docks. Public docks, they have been supported with the voter registration funds, supposed to be open for recreational voters. And, uh, it used to be that you can only charge from two, two dollars a stay to five dollars, and now they're saying going through a process that they've had with your, your local, in your subregion of commercial mortgage rates, that you can actually charge a, charge a stay. And, uh, now we have a cost to stay, but you can use, if it's optional, to use electricity and the water for ten dollars a day. And then that helps. We're not profiting off of that, but we're recapturing some of the expenses and, and that. So, it's something that may be a tool in our toolbox, is that we have the ability to charge for the docks. I would not advocate that we charge for like organized yachting association groups that come to town and bring a lot of activity, you know, um, only because they bring that much economic impact when they come with them, and it might be a disincentive for them to, to come if they all had to pay. Just for their.
Market rate would be about, uh, fifteen bucks for some of the big yachts, twenty bucks a night.
And, you know, maybe that's okay. You know, a lot of them use the power anyway, and, uh.
Is that open for discussion?
Absolutely.
Right now?
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I think that, uh, some of the yacht clubs, as they come down and they, uh, would expect to pay a general fee possibly, uh, rather than individual hookup kinds of things, just a general fee to come down here for a reservation, uh, of some sort, because they all want to kind of like sign up on the, uh, as you well know, uh, on the cruise list of where they're going to be. And so, yeah, a couple hundred dollars or three hundred dollars or whatever like that from each one of the businesses might be very appropriate, especially on our docks here. I, just a suggestion.
No, I think it's great. That, cause my next sentence was gonna be, they also recommended, or offered the ability for cities to have a, a special use permit. If you have an activity that's coming in, before, you know, you know you have to share the docks with everybody, and it's really difficult for us to have a event come in and reserve space, but if we have a special event permit, we can clear the docks and.
I'd like to get this going before, um, Christmas ships, so we can have that special use permit for Christmas ships. Cause we had some issue last morning. We had some issue out here.
One thing, if you have a special permit, they have a coffee cart there at five in the morning.
Coffee cart.
Coffee and donuts. We'll, we'll make a land office business from them yacht folk.
Anyway, there's.
So, that is, interesting enough, that's a big complaint.
You don't have to stand up on top and move your tops, because, see, that's what you walk down on the dock.
Can't go.
Sorry.
Not in uniform anyways.
Well, that's some of the discussion that the chief was gonna talk about at some point, is, you know, having some trusted staff or tool, people that would, could possibly do that, or even citizens, or even the citizen kind of thing that the court's support, that could actually start writing tickets and kind of move these people along.
That's kind of a little bit of a, uh, something they'll tell me to, a discussion that we are having among staff and some, uh, little citizens that show up.
Can I talk to the chief about it too?
So, uh, enforcement of the, the Sand Island docks, or Sand Island generally, is something that we're also discussing as far as partnerships and training and, um, all those variables. So, there's a, it's a, it's a hot topic. However, this weekend, over on, past weekend, over on Sand Island, the, the, uh, Sand Castle Festival was a district partner. I mean, it was if you don't have, didn't get a chance to get over, I would highly recommend going over in the next couple, before it rains, and seeing the, uh, sand castles that the carvers cost, and all the, the competitors carved, and these, the people that came, or, we last year, they were in Cannon Beach, and this year, they're here, and they really like it, cause it doesn't go away with the tide, right? High tide, and it washes their, all that hard work away. And they absolutely love our sand here. It's, it's the best sand that they've ever seen, and would have international competitions, you can, an event, although it's just the first year, and it was still really popular, and, you know, quite a few people attended. That, that was, uh.
Just kind of a way to get.
A lot of opportunity.
People wandering over there, you know, who are not, I mean, lookers not sand movers.
This is, this is interesting, because again, I reflect it back in history, and, uh, this was bigger than, uh, Halloween Town was when Halloween Town first started. Not when Tina came here, but when it first started in, in this, in this area. There'd only be seventy-five, fifty, seventy-five people. There are a couple hundred people over there. And very impressive for the first time.
I had seventy of them with me.
Like a pawn. A chavron.
No, I did. We had a large group over there camping.
I know. But, you know, there was music, the downtowns did really, the businesses were, were a lot of really good growth, and are record days for this time of year.
So, uh, when brought up by citizen, the, you might want to pass this along, maybe kayak races also on that weekend around the island.
Yeah, all kinds of things.
That would be something that could be very doable.
Fish derby?
Yep. But, but yes, that, that kayak derby I thought was, how many people are kayaking now?
Lots of them.
Amateurs versus pros or whatever?
What was the day for? Some days are not the day for it.
That's a pro day.
Award race, yeah.
Uh, all kinds of.
It's always windy outside.
Olympics now, you see that?
And, so, I mean, I think a good time was had by all with, with that, um, Hit Machine has played last, is playing this Thursday, and Salgado's playing, uh, next Thursday. So, Curtis Salgado will be here to close out the season, thirteen nights. That's always a good show.
Salgado's next Thursday?
Yeah, next Thursday, yeah. So, in addition to that, we've been working, we hear the council's desires to have more detail, more reporting, revenues, expenditures. Been working with, uh, in terms of, we've been continuing to be, we took a little, little pause there for a bit to check in. And, uh, I think we're, within the next couple meetings, I think we should, can have a ball out of deliverables from a contractor, any contractor, develop expectations of the city as far as how they're gonna support tourism, cause there's seems to be some expectation that it'll be just the contractor doing everything, which the reality is that doesn't gonna work. You need you need to have all the work, so we need the cooperation of the city staff to, to really be a team and make it all work. And, uh, within the next couple meetings, I would anticipate being ready to talk about it. Sounds good?
Uh, the industrial park, we talked about the, the regional significant designation. We're also PG, been making some good traction with PG, um, as far as getting the, the electrical leads to our customers, not only the, the existing customers, but future needs for the industrial park. Uh, I talk about that fairly often, but it's actually, it seems to be, uh, a good thing to.
Is that actually moving forward?
Yeah, it is actually moving forward.
Okay.
Main Street, they're, they're, they're working on the bylaws and the job description for the coordinator position. So, one of the things that House Bill twenty-five sixty, uh, just passed, has the legislature close there, and that is a bill that requires cities to require a virtual meeting option. So, so what we, we kind of just had our, by January first, twenty twenty-two, we're being, be required to have virtual meetings again. If you wanna go there sooner than that, I think we're, you know, the technology is, seems to be pretty good, and we've had our pickups and.
So, we can do a hybrid.
Yeah, a hybrid.
But we have to have the ability to let people come in through, through that, yeah.
And if you wanna go there sooner, I think it's become kind of affects, affected and, you know, the norm, and people watching on YouTube really appreciate that.
I think we could go there sooner. I mean, you know, if you had to do a month or a month and a half, whatever, but I think if we go there sooner, why not? And it also allows us the ability to, if we are not in town, happen to be out of town, we can come in on that.
I thought you were gonna say something, Kathy.
Oh, I just, I was wanting to clarify, you meant hybrid, the hybrid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
And then probably lastly, the, the street utilities project and then the Riverwalk project have been pretty all-consuming lately with the, um, the Riverwalk going from the, the accepted concept to trying to getting the next phase of scope of work and budget and timing, and and then also the, uh, the streets project and utilities, that also has a similar we're trying to get to that thirty percent design right now, and there's a lot of moving parts, and the, the scope, it's, the schedule, budget, sequencing. It's really complicated to how, how we phase the work, how we keep the public pieces of open. We're trying to be real thoughtful and stepwise as we go through this.
Is that one, can we do? I mean, is it capable? And that only thirty percent? Because of the way the lift station is and sewer and, or fifty, ninety percent?
No, we're, no, we're, we're hoping to come back to you with a, a concept where we want to make some, some minimum level of improvements and get those to a hundred percent designed.
Yep.
Even the other, other pieces of a hundred percent design, but maybe not construct them. We'd construct them in, in a logical manner. But go back to, when those are just about complete, go back out to a request for proposals or qualifications to solicit a master developer to come in and look, take another look at the site to see if we can anchor some, a big development firm that wants to come in and take it down and, and do the rest of it.
It would be very complex to storm, whether it be an onsite, you know, per individual lot or not, all in, yeah.
And, uh, for example, um, we build the road, we build the curb, we build the gutter, we build the sidewalk. And, and we have essentially, in an urban setting, you don't have any setback to this, that you'll have some of your buildings be right up against the sidewalk. So, we don't know that. Uh, there, whatever utilities are gonna have to go take the sidewalk out to put the utilities in.
Sure.
The curb ramps where they go, who knows? Um, so maybe that we just do a curb and gutter along the entire both sides of the property, one, one or both sides of the property, or, or sections of that. And then, um, they come in and fill it in later once they have their plans.
Well, but that will get to a hundred percent.
Oh, yeah.
Sooner than, sooner than the.
Yeah, it, it just starts to involve a, a partnership with your developer.
One question, do we have a big master plan for the whole city? And I'm thinking twenty-five years down, or is that sewer plant gonna be there twenty-five years? No. Will it have the, uh, legal ability to be there? Cause the federal government's playing games with what you can do next to a river. Two, is there any idea of putting, I'm gonna call it industrial, but a money generating system on the veneer plant as compared to housing? I want something that generates a lot of money. Housing does not. You know, it's the office buildings, whatever.
You will have more than nightly ground floor retail space, the.
No, that, that's nickel and dime stuff, John. I'm talking, uh, corporate office, where we got people making a hundred thousand dollars, not.
So, that could be, that could be like the top executive floor of one of those buildings. Could be a corporate office, yes.
I'm talking about the whole building being executive.
It would be, it would be.
The.
No problem.
The developers we toured on the site were really impressed by not only the site itself and its beauty and its, you know, this magnificence of the river, but the, the other things that the city's working on, the industrial park and the, uh, those other pieces that allow all of that activity to happen. So, when you have, create this nucleus of a really nice place that has ripple effects, that, that industrial area is gonna do well, there's gonna be more investment there. If we had all industrial or commercial hours on the waterfront, there may not achieve that, but.
Well, if you think, let, let's put a barge tug building thing down on the Armstrong place. Big company, they would like a nice office someplace and would fit their zone room to put it on the waterfront. So, I mean, we're, now we're talking big money executive type stuff, and we're not talking, it's quarter billion, we're talking a corporate headquarters. So, you've got lawns and all that other stuff.
Helicopter pad on top.
Yeah. And a boat ramp.
I like what you're thinking.
But, 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 okay.
That's all you.
But if you're only gonna aim at one thing, then you're shot.
Well, I think the beauty of where it's going is that it'll be divvied up into like six or eight different parcels as far as.
Yeah, but if all the parcels are for apartments, you're, who cares?
Well, it'd be an individual bid against it, so.
That's all up for discussion.
I guess the, whatever process we, um, go through, we'll see who, what kind of offers are entertained.
Well, I like the fact that we have people like Roy Kim, Atkins Dane, uh, Tocla, all interested and definitely pursuing it. They know that we are a little ways away from the development phase, and that's why they're, I think if we're a year ahead of schedule right now, we'd be talking very much differently right now.
Our, our, our best problem is getting across that damn railroad. Thirty and near, no matter what we put in, we really have gotta be better than what we are now, a lot better.
That's what sure could be moved.
Yes, that was encouraging to hear today. That's been on the city's radar forever. Eight o'clock, noon, and five o'clock trains are.
Zero out the old knife river, the old knife river, that's already been mined out.
I was really, I was really impressed. Another thing that's been on the radar is the, uh, switching yard. And I was really impressed that, uh, uh, that we heard a bit of a report on that, that it's on someone else's radar as well. And that, that will do away with a lot of the, the, the train traffic and stoppage in, in our community. Uh, just that being moved somewhere else, uh, on, uh, on ODOT property, or ODOT rail property.
Move them and speed them up.
Uh, Betsy Johnson's, uh, a navigator for that as well.
Well, John, it's common in cities, seems to be elevation wise lower. Could we dig a ditch, I mean, through there, drop the railroad down twenty feet?
Who's gonna dig the ditch?
No, no, I, I'm not, let's not worry about the money. I'm just talking about physically, could we, cause if we could get that, so we drive, drive straight off.
ODOT, there was someone in ODOT that was looking at that, and we're trying to figure out internally how they're gonna jump the creek, or the two creek.
So.
I've seen that done, but that's, but remember, have you opened the Grand Central and, uh, Penn Station? All the trains that come in there to go underneath the city?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it isn't two guys, you know, holding a building, it's a dog.
You know, trenching the rail would be a very, you know.
John, what else you got? What else you got to report on, anything? You know, but.
Uh, yeah, this, this is the highlights.
Okay, uh, do we have, we don't have no meeting at six, do we? Okay, so we're gonna actually break till, we'll, a seven o'clock meeting tonight.
Executive session.
Uh, no, we don't have nothing up at there, in case, just in case, but we have no executive. So, with that, we are adjourned. Good work.
Hey, Tim, thank you.
We can go out in this time.
Hey, Tim, hey, it's good seeing ya.
Would you like my replacement here? Six twenty-five?
Six fifty-five?
Six fifty-five?
You're a lucky, you're a lucky charm.
Yeah. It might be Eggers. It might be Sergeant Eggers, or it might be Jamie Coy, one of those two. Jameis working since this morning, gone dude.
You know, second because I got a fundraiser.
Hey, so.
I got an idea for fundraising. Just an idea.